Hi Vivian.
How you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Oh, I gotta pause, hold on. There we go, YouTube bouncing back.
For all you Zoom people that aren't technically challenged like me, how do I change my name? Uh, down low, I was gonna throw something to just represent the seat that I hold. So people would recognize it, anybody know how to do that?
It should be in one of the, um, trying to think if it's under participants, you go to participant and then you click the bubbles on the right, like the three little bubbles, you can go down and it'll say, there's like our rename, and so you can rename yourself.
Gotcha.
Hi Jim.
Good afternoon all, how are we? Alright, and we have two, seven, eight, nine, we have a quorum, alright. I was concerned, um, then let's get going, if that's okay? Uh, let's call this meeting of the abandoned and discontinued roads commission to order. Uh, let me see, Heather, could we have a roll call please?
Sure, Peter Coughlin.
I'm here, just got here.
Tom Doak.
Here.
Rebecca Graham.
I am here.
Joe Higgins is out, uh, James Katsifakis.
Here.
Chris is coming later. Roberta Manter.
Here.
And Vivian McHale.
Here.
John Monk.
Here.
Catherine is out, Ryan Pelletier.
Here.
And Steve Young.
Here.
Alright, we have before us draft minutes from the November fifteen meeting, I think we've all had an opportunity to take a look at those, are there any comments, corrections, additions, changes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Alright. We have a race to the second, and then, uh, okay, uh, we have a vote please, and we'll have to do this by roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Peter Coughlin.
Yes.
Tom Doak.
Um, since I wasn't on the commission then, I don't think I should vote.
Okay. Rebecca Graham.
Yes.
And Joe is out, James Katsifakis.
Yes.
Chris is out, Roberta.
Yes.
Vivian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Okay, Catherine's out, Ryan.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, well, updates and announcements, well, I'd be remiss if I didn't start off with probably the leadoff, and that is Tom, uh, to Tom Doak, welcome aboard, uh, we, we welcome your participation in this group, and, uh, good to see you here.
Well, thank you, I've been trying to catch up. I've been in touch with Carla on a somewhat regular basis, but some of this is new to me, so I've read all the materials, so it's not a feature for me, to me, obviously, a lot of you know, so.
I'm sure you're familiar with a lot of it, but, but, uh, if you want to discuss any of it at any point, please feel free to give me a call, I'd be glad to speak with you. Uh, does anyone else have any, uh, updates or announcements they want to bring to the commission's attention? Alright, with that, um, there's a lot of paper that's out there today. We have a draft report, our report is due February of next year. Uh, there are also, uh, some discussions of a potential road inventory, uh, questionnaire that we might send to municipalities, and there are several different drafts and memo involving those that have been circulating. And then we also have four public comments that have been filed with us for today. Uh, I'd suggest that we'll hold off on the public comments until it's time for the public hearing, and we can accept those comments as part of the public hearing record. Uh, but with regard to maybe, uh, do we want to talk about the, uh, the questionnaire? First, and see if we can just get that in order with sort of a subcommittee that set up, uh, Pete, Roberta, and, uh, and Rebecca and I have been emailing on, on the potential of what that questionnaire might look like for municipalities, I think the idea is if we, we want to go to them for some information that would be helpful, let's make it concise, let's recognize we're probably only going to do this once, and, uh, make sure that it's information that will be really helpful in moving the ball forward on the issues that, that have been raised with the commission. So Roberta took the first stab, and I appreciate that very much, uh, I took a little bit different tack on it, I know Pete looked at that as well, and then, uh, Rebecca was kind enough to send along a, a questionnaire that I wasn't aware of that MMA had asked about, uh, in twenty sixteen with a similar situation, uh, but it was interesting to see some of the responses, and, and you know, there was about a sixteen percent response rate, I don't know what we can typically expect for, for a questionnaire like that, but, but that goes toward, you know, with the, the, the quality of the information and the breadth of the information that we can get. Uh, we, we need as, as many respondents as possible, so with that, um, any reactions to those draft? The questionnaires?
Uh, Jim?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, first of all, I think that was a very good response rate, I've, I've heard uh, some people say that a ten percent response rate on a voluntary survey is very good. I, looking online, I think they said, uh, anywhere from six percent to, I think something like sixteen percent was considered good. Uh, so I, I think that was a, a very good response rate. That was a wonderful survey, Rebecca, thank you so much for finding that, I really appreciate that you made that available to us, I just wish we could have had earlier because I think it would have answered a lot of the questions we've been asking. Um, but, uh, it, it doesn't completely overlap with the questions we were looking at this time. Um, but the information that it supplies is, is really, really helpful. And, and Jim, I think your, I, your version of the survey I think comes pretty close to what I had suggested, um, I think for the most part I can support your draft. Uh, I think there, there may have been, uh, one more question that I wished was in there, but, uh, I think you, you covered some of the most important points.
Other thoughts? Thank you, I, uh, I've had something good to work from, so I appreciate that, Roberta.
Jim, can I, I, I have, I just have a question, am I, am I looking at the one, I've got two copies, one has got some red on it and some, is that the one I'm looking at, is that the amended one? That has some in red and some in, and, and black?
I think that's Peter Coughlin's with the red on it, is that? Yeah, I think.
Yeah, Tom, up in question two B.
Yeah.
Is it, is it red title and office crossed out?
Yeah.
That was my version.
Okay. The one, the one, uh, thought I had was, had to do, I think, would question may, it may sit, fit in under number five, I'm not sure. But the question as I read it here says, are there any public easements in your municipality? Um, I would assume some people might say, I don't know. Um, but I wondered, wondering if we want to ask a more direct question or a subset that says something like, you know the locations of, of roads, uh, in your municipality where there is a, where there was a disking abandoned road and there's a public easement retained or something? To get a sense on, and I don't know if that's the exact language, but to get a sense, do, do folks know where these are, because I think that's one, one of the issues, do you know if you have them? And if you have them, do you know where they are? And then it could follow, well, how many do you think you have, or, or something, and then how many miles are on?
Fair enough, we're, we're hoping that if we get to the road commissioner or, or to the board of road commissioners that they would, they would be able, responsive for that, but you're right, let's, let's find out what the, the level of knowledge is before we ask the specific question.
Only, only because I, I've dealt with some towns that would say, I don't, either I don't know, or uh, I think they're awesome, but I don't know where they are.
Alright. Other thoughts?
Rebecca has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't see that. Go ahead Rebecca.
Sorry, John, I'm heading back to my desk, I had a couple of edits, but I'm wondering if some of the nuance might be better as part of the memo that accompanies the survey, because I do think there is some nuance in there that deserves to be called out, but might become confusing if it's in the question. So if we provide some context and examples.
Okay.
To Tom's point in there, then we might be able to do that within the memo portion so that the data that we get is great, because I actually think there's value in, no, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
True enough. Alright, so this is, this remains a work in progress, do, uh, does the commission, uh, is the commission okay with the, with uh, Peter and Roberta and Rebecca and me working through this, and we'll continue to keep you apprised, nothing will get finalized until you've all seen it, does that make sense? Sounds like we'll work on the questions a bit, but we'll also work on putting together a cover memo to go with that.
John has his hand raised.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I'm all for that, Jim, excellent suggestion, keep plowing through, but uh, this is more aimed at Rebecca, if she felt there was a better way to get a little bit higher participation rate, even though that's probably not. It probably is the volunteer, uh, rate, but is there an incentive or a, uh, if you're a member of MMA that you have to do the minimum standard, and this might be rolled into it to get more concrete feedback?
Well, all of the towns are members of MMA except one. So I'm not sure, you know, predating membership on something like that, it really is about people who are doing about seventeen different things at once, um, and I think that to the extent that this is going to fall on their desk, uh, when they might not be as incredibly busy as they are in November, might be beneficial, but there also might be some transitory things that are happening in some communities that are doing their municipal elections as to who this might fall into the responsibility to fill out. So there's been a lot of changeover in number of the individuals who may um, actually have that information and new people in those spaces that might not even know where to start.
No, excellent, I just, uh, think if we could get a broader database to work with, that would help, especially since this has been five years and the, the COVID change with non-resident purchases is much higher than it was when their survey was originally done.
Yeah, and to that point, I think those are the ones that are going to illuminate more issues for communities who might not have even looked at this before, but now all of a sudden are being asked to maintain roads that didn't have full-time residents pre, previously as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Fair enough. Alright, so the, the, uh, the ad hoc questionnaire committee will continue its efforts and will report back. Uh, and thank, I thank everyone for, for participating with us, and and maybe what we can do to encourage participation rates is to get some money from the legislature, we can go buy some prizes, we can give people I'm kidding, I'm kidding, but but there we go.
Jim, could I just add one thing, when you're working on the memo, um, and Rebecca probably will understand this too, sometimes a lot of it has to do with turnover and change in municipal government, you know, new elected officials, new town manager, new road commissioner, public works, maybe if you include it in the memo, just kind of a, a hint towards whoever gets that letter, and I don't know who that's going to, but if they are aware of former public works director in their community that's still living, or a former selectman, or a former town manager.
Right.
Sometimes those things were done, you know, years ago, and, you know, you're five town managers forward now, and nobody knows wh- when that was done, or what was done, or what road is or isn't a public easement. So if there are some resources like that around in some of these towns, it might just be helpful to remind the sitting person that they may have someone within their reach that would know some of that.
That's an excellent idea.
Ryan, I, I know at one point, I, I think at one point you said you would send out letters to, uh, uh, town officials that you knew of and ask them some questions. That's something that I've found is very useful, is to get in touch with people personally and say, could you please respond to this survey, just kind of give them a little nudge. So, I don't know, if he, if each of us could maybe get in, get in touch with people in towns in our area, maybe we'd get a little bit better response.
Right, well, this is some good idea, valuable ideas, make sure we build those into the memo. Uh, I know when I was, uh, defending Livermore in a road case with regard to whether it was a road that had been discontinued or abandoned by statute, and whether there were thirty years of maintenance consecutive between nineteen forty-six and nineteen seventy-six. Uh, one of the most valuable pieces of information was a deposition with the former road commissioner, who then was ninety-four years old, so, yeah, I understand, um, we, we can, we can look at that, so. Alright, um, getting back now to the, to the, getting on to the draft report, uh, there's a lot there, and, and I'm not trying to, uh, weigh anyone down with it, it, it's, a lot of it is sort of an accumulation of what we've been doing for the last two years. And so, you know, reviewing where we've been, what we've proposed, and then leading up to what we're proposing now. Um, so far, we've looked at some draft legislation and some proposals, and we've voted on two. One of them was, uh, with regard to ways requiring special protection, the idea that we could help protect public easements and the work that's been done, whether by individuals, road associations, or municipalities, by allowing a municipality to close public easements or portions of public easements to, uh, or, or to, uh, restrict truck weights, or to do whatever, uh, you would do for a normal town road on a public easement as well. So that was a proposal, uh, that we'd brought before everyone had discussed it, and it was unanimous vote at that point. Uh, I don't think that anyone has second thoughts about that, but I'd wanted to bring that up, but that's, that was the first one we'd, we'd taken action on and looked at. And so that's, that's discussed and described in the report. The second piece was where, where public easements are maintained by individuals, not by the municipality, but by where individuals who abut the public easement maintain it so that they can have their own access. Uh, there's a, a limited liability piece that we created, uh, entitled fourteen, section one fifty-nine E, and the idea being that, uh, you know, if, if folks abutting, uh, take normal care to, to do some work on the road, then they're not going to find themselves being liable for personal injury or property damage when members of the public also use that easement, um, come down the road. Uh, they're not allowed to create ultra hazardous situations, and it's much like when you let private individuals use your land for free for recre, recreational purposes, there's a limitation on liability in state law in order to encourage that. So we built upon that same concept and did that for, for roads, and I believe that, that also was something that we unanimously supported. So that's where we've been, and, and that alone would probably be fairly good work for the session, although we're a much more ambitious group than that, right? And so we, we have several other proposals that we've been talking about. One of them was, uh, we had introduced a bill in the last session, where we had proposed a bill that was introduced, and, um, the idea was that we wanted to change the archaic term private way in the road association statute to public easement, so that there'd be less confusion. And it was, the idea was shot down by the legislature at the last minute because there was a misunderstanding as to what a private way really means. And so, um, the third proposal that we have is, uh, really the, uh, the idea of the, the term private way being replaced by public easement throughout those sections involving road associations and, uh, the municipal ability to work on a public easement. Uh, that seems to be a, a fairly easy one, and I know I've kind of jumped ahead to number seven on our, uh, on our agenda, but I, I think that's a, an easy one to take care of, we proposed it last time, and so I'm suggesting that we, uh, try again and see if we can get it right this time, is there support for that?
Tom has his hand raised.
Tom, please, go ahead.
Oh, I do? Oh.
Yeah. Okay, no, you must have heard something.
I know, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It was an unintended hand.
Um, well, while I'm, well, I think, um, I think the issue, uh, uh, I think the issue was in part, um, if, this is my memory of the discussion, that the, was that, was this w- w- was this going to require potentially, a- a- and I understand that changing the terms, I think there was two, two issues, one is this seemed like a universal change, and are we sure that by changing the, that wording, we're not affecting something else, you know, that, that, there's some has it, has the statute been exam, have the statute been examined enough so that we know we're not, we're not doing something we didn't intend to do by changing the words, I think that was one of the, one of the uncertainties. But the other one had to do with the whole idea of a road association that, um, you are now, you know, be, could be forced into a, and you may have, and maybe the statute already allows it, just, it isn't clear, that you could be forced into a road association to maintain a, a, a public easement that you don't have any control over, so you're, as a landowner now, must maintain the public easement um, for the enjoyment of everybody. And I think that was the other issue that was kind of hanging things up.
And, and that could be the consequence, because, uh, what, what might happen in, uh, if, if Roberta doesn't mind, I'll just cite her as an example, uh, she and her husband live on a road that's, uh, you know, discontinued road, it's, it's, it's public easement, and, um, the town could maintain it, you know, the town can, if the town meeting votes to maintain a public easement, it can to the extent that it's authorized. Um, it doesn't, and, and hasn't, uh, when asked in, in her instance. And so, uh, they have taken it upon themselves to maintain the road, and maybe some, with the efforts of some of their neighbors. But if they wanted to make it, um, a more equitable distribution of, of responsibilities, they could form a road association with their neighbors. And to the extent the town doesn't maintain it, they could maintain it, and yes, it, it would mean that if there were four or more owners there, and they had this road association, then if Jim bought a lot in there, Jim would have to start contributing as part of that road association, or at least I'd get the assessments, and they could take action against me for failure to pay them, um, it it's either that, or, uh, we continue with the situation now where there's a public easement and folks are just left to their own defenses.
Right, I understand, and that was, that was part of it, um, I think the idea was also even people that might not even need the easement who own land along it might be forced to use it, I mean, to force to maintain it, it, it could be a boundary line which you don't even use. And, and so you could be forced into an association. I think the other part of it was, for some, was that well, if you can be, if a private owner can be forced into an association, what about holder of the public easement, does the town have some responsibility if, if they want to form a, a road association? Should the town be a partner in that road association? I'm sure that's a part of the idea, but that, you know, if there's an equal, if there's a sharing of benefit to it, then should the all who are put into it, you know, all the benefit be put into it?
I think you and, and Roberta, for different reasons, might be on the same page on that one, but, uh, but no, I, I understand, and, and, uh, but the concern is, the, the town doesn't really own anything, it, what it main, it has the ability to maintain the access for the public and to defend the access for the public, uh, but it doesn't own abutting land, it doesn't have any other reason to be there. Uh, under the road association statute, it wouldn't be required to join.
Right, I understand, I'm just saying that I think that was one of the other issues, and fairness point of view from the landowners was you could potentially be pushing a landowner into an association of which they have, they, well, the one thing the town can do is control the use. And, oh, you, you as a landlord cannot control the use, but you are forced into an association to maintain the road for the use of every, everybody, and that, that's where I think it starts to fall apart at the state house. And, but I'm not sure there's a solution to that, I'm just saying I think that's one of the troubling issues from a landlord point of view of being forced into something that they don't think they may or may not even benefit from.
Well, let me ask this musical question then, before we go too far down on this, um, Tom, what, what would the Woodland Owners Association come down on this?
Um, we would, I think, I think it's a, it's, it's obviously a difficult one, I think that the hard part, the hard, one of the big issues from the whole, from, from a landlord point of view is I'm, we're happy to take responsibility for where we control the use, you know, that's liability, that's maintenance, that's all that kind of stuff. But when we, the landowners have no control over the use, and now are required to maintain that use for others, that is where the rub comes, and and that's the frustration, and Jim, I don't know that there's, I mean, this is one of the sticky ones, obviously.
Right.
I think the solution is to get out of the public easement business from municipalities as much as they can, and let the tat, let the, let the landowners fight it out amongst themselves, because then they can control the access.
True, before I turn this over to Roberta, just one, one point, and that is sometimes that public easement, though, is the only right that the landowner has to get to and from his or her property.
That, that I understand, that I, absolutely, I understand the purpose of it, and I know this is not a, I'm just saying that fr, if you want to talk friction points.
Right.
That's it, and, uh, I do like the idea of the towns being able to post the land, uh, post the, you know, easements. I do like the fact, I do like those kind of things, I think that we're all supportive of that. I think there was some statute that says a landowner can opt out if they don't use the, if they don't, at least you should put a provision in there that allows the landlord opt out of the payment if they don't, if they don't use the property. I mean, if they don't use the road, they shouldn't be, if they don't need that road, they may have an alternative. They should not have to be forced into an association. I think there's some language elsewhere to, to that effect. That'd soften it a bit.
Okay, well, let me turn this to Roberta and then, and then Ryan.
Yes, um, Tom, I think you hit the nail right on the head. I, I'm in kind of a conflicting position because on the one hand, I'm, you know, I'm the founder of Main Roadways, and I represent the people who are being forced to maintain these roads that are public easements. And on the other hand, I'm on the board for the Main Alliance for Road Associations, which is mostly concerned with private roads, not private ways. Uh, so from, from their point of view, I, I really have to support changing the term from private way to public easement, because it's very confusing saying that I, these apply to private ways and private roads, because it sounds like you're talking about the same thing, and you're not, you're talking about two different things. A private road is privately owned, privately maintained, the private landowners have some control over who uses the road, but a private way or a public easement is open to public use, and the private landowners have no control over how or when those public users use the road, which is how you end up with roads that look like that. You know, I, it's people who come through in mud season when everybody else, everybody who depends on the road is trying to stay off of it, and somebody else comes through mud running and chews it up. Um, so I have my, my, uh, Main Alliance for Road Associations opinion that changing the terminology would be great, would avoid a lot of confusion. But then on the other hand, from Main Roadways perspective, we don't want private individuals to be forced to maintain a road for the public. Now, as my husband says, that's involuntary servitude, basically slavery, it's saying that you have to do this labor against your will with no pay, and when you're not the one that's primarily benefiting from it, or, or at least you're not the only one benefiting from it, because the public gets to use it too. I do think that, uh, one good solution is if we tweak section thirty twenty-six A, which is a discontinuance statute, uh, to make it easier to extinguish a public easement and make it a private shared easement for the abutters, that would solve the problem of, I, not denying access to anyone who needs it, but it would also solve the problem of having those people having to maintain a public road. I, I think that could be a, a much more useful statute if it just had some, some adjustments made to it. And if the towns would, I, help people in making it into a private easement. The, uh, the alternative to that, I think, would be if the town really has a need for that road, say they own public land on it, or it provides access to a lake, or it provides fire access, or if they just want it as a recreational trail, they should be able to de- they should be able to declare what the public access is for, what the purpose is of, of keeping a public easement over that road, and provide sufficient maintenance by the public to support that public use. It might be difficult to enforce, but at least it would give you something you could work with. And it would even out that question of, do we have private citizens maintaining a road for the public's use? If the public actually contributes something to that, that maintenance, they don't have to keep it to townway standard. And this is one of the things we've been suggesting is not every road has to be kept safe and convenient for travelers with motor vehicles, as, as under, I, I, what is it, thirty twenty-six? No, thirty-six fifty-one is the one that says that all town roads must be kept to this standard. Well, not every road has to be kept to that standard. Not every road has daily heavy trucks going back and forth on it. I, not every road has, you know, a car going by every few seconds. When you have a road that's a residential road primarily, or that serves woodlots, or some of each, that road is not going to be used that heavily. So why does it need to be kept to that same standard? Why can't we have a lesser standard of road where the public does contribute some maintenance, but it's not required to, to put a million dollars per mile into the road? We know towns can't afford that, and we're trying to work with towns too and find solutions that work on both sides. So I, coming back to the original question, I, I, I love the idea of changing it, changing the terminology from private way to public easement, because that's really what it means. And I hate the idea of forcing private individuals to maintain public easements through a road association. But at least if we eliminate the confusion, maybe people would say, hey, wait a minute, if, if that's really a public easement, maybe this doesn't make sense. So that's where I stand. I'm, you know, half on one side and half on the other side.
Any other comments or thoughts?
My only comment was gonna be in response to Tom's comment about something to soften the language so that landowners who have another access point can opt out of joining. I think, I think that's, I think that's fair. And I, I just support that, that language, I guess, if that can be codified some way so that we don't lose sight of it, because that seemed to be a big hangup the last time about forcing somebody who's got another, another place they can access their property, why should they have to pay? And I think I could live with, with changing that language, so there's an opt-out provision when there is truly another option.
Well, the, the, the road association statutes do say that the, I, the formula for charging assessments for maintenance has to be fair and equitable. And that's a really vague term. So far as I understand it, the courts have taken that to mean that whatever your formula is, you have to apply it the same way to everybody on the road. So for example, some road associations just charge everybody the same amount, no matter how far in they live, no matter how they use the road or when they use the road, they all pay the same amount. And usually that makes it a low, low enough amount so that it's not a big burden on anybody. And it also makes it immensely easier for the layman who are trying to administer the road association. Then there are other people who, or other road associations that charge one rate for year-round residences and another rate for summer-only residences. And the problem that comes up there is, well, the people that are only there in the summer don't want to have to play, pay for snow plowing, which can be a big expense. But on the other hand, if their house catches fire in the middle of winter, or a tree comes down on the power line in the middle of winter and knocks out their, their heat, so their pipes freeze, they're benefiting from having that road plowed, so shouldn't they be playing, sharing in the cost of plowing as well? Then you have people that have woodlots, and they say, well, we only come in there to harvest it once every ten years or once every twenty years or whatever. Why should we pay for the road the rest of the time? But the rest of the time, everyone else is building the road. So that when the, the woodsman does come in to harvest his lot, he's got a better road than he, he would have otherwise. So shouldn't he be contributing to the road in the meantime? So fair and equitable is a really fuzzy kind of concept. And it's kind of up to each road association to determine what works for them. I, I don't know if there's anything that can put, be put into the language to suggest options other than the, everybody pays the same, or, um, maybe, maybe Mara can do some advising to help people determine that. I, I know there are some people who will say, well, I've got access from the other side, I never used that road. But they could, if they needed to. If they needed, say there was a brush fire out on the back of their property, they could use that road. Say they decide they want to divide off a lot off of the back, they could use that road. And again, even if they haven't used it for years, then they're benefiting from everybody else having kept that road passable and built it up and proved it or whatever. So it's, it's not an easy question to answer.
I think, I think one of the solutions is if we could identify the roads that are purely public easement is retained to prevent landlocking, and those people you know, if there's no real public benefit other than that, we should get, figure out the best way to get those into the hands of private people that need that access and get, get the public easement out of the way. I think that would cure a bunch of problems, not all of them, but I think a bunch. And then if you want to create a road association under the, you know, that's a whole different matter, because now they, the people that control the road association control the use. And that's a huge difference from, from a public easement. And I think a, an effort should be made to identify those roads and encourage those municipalities to abandon, to get out of the business of public easements. If it has, if it has an access to clearly important public, you, public, you know, uh, land or public waters, then I think it's reasonable for, to expect the towns to contribute something to maintenance of that for the public benefit that is there, you know, to the access to this water. My experience is very, very few of these go to a public, that, public place. In fact, I, I know very few that do. Some might. But I think that's the issue, is how do we, I don't know, Jim, is this, this is maybe getting too far afield, I don't know, but I think you could solve a lot if we could identify those that, there's really no reason other than the people that need to own it along the road. And then you get, and then the public, then you don't have to fight over maintenance. You, you say, okay, that the road association statute's there, it's available to anybody that owns the private land that, that uses that road and, and let, then you're out of this business. I think that's the long-term solution, and I, I think there's a way maybe to encourage that through this group.
Well, I think that, that ties into Roberta's earlier comment about amending section thirty twenty-six A and title twenty-three to make it easier to discontinue the public easement, with the idea being that you'd give some folks time to work private arrangements.
Right.
That the problem is, and we've got three comments coming before us this afternoon, and we'll hear more. Is it more and more, it's people who are coming in, cutting off access that we keep hearing issues about? And, and then they'd go to the town hall, and the town's saying, I don't know what, you know, what this is, if it's a public easement, if it's a discontinued way, if it's an abandoned way, it could have been discontinued by the county, by the town. The records are old. And, and then you wind up with lawsuits for years that cost lots of money, and, and no one knows. And in the meantime, the road's falling apart, you've got ice forming in public ways. It's, it's a mess. And, and that's part of why the legislature asked us to take a look at this, because legislators keep getting these calls too. And so I, I, I don't know, but, but I think, you know, the long run, the idea perhaps looking at these public easements, asking towns to look at them and seeing whether they should go back to being private roads. Maybe that's it. Maybe what we want to say is, yes, public, private way means public easement, but by the way, you can't form a road association on a public easement.
Yeah, one, one other place, Tom, where I think you're gonna get pushback is from people who want recreational trails. I, yep, John, I see you nodding your head. I, I know this is coming. Snowmobile trails don't hurt a road, really. They're, you know, with rare exceptions where, you know, you might have somebody who goes off of the trail and causes damage. But when they're used responsibly, they're going over the snow, they're not going over the road, they're not damaging the, the land under the road. So I, I think for the most part, as long as they're not, you know, zooming up a road and meeting a snowplow head-on, I, I think for the most part, snow, snowmobile trails and private easements could coexist pretty comfortably. When it comes to mud runners, that's another question. If you have responsible ATVs, we have some that just go by putt-putt-putt-putt and leave what my husband calls turkey tracks, and that's it. We have no objection to them, but that, that should be in the hands of the landowner, whether they're going to allow that or not. And then you run into a dispute that we've had in this committee about, or commission rather, about who actually owns the easement. The town owns the easement over the top of the road, the landowner owns the land under the road, so which one of them owns it so as to be able to give permission for an ATV trail? I, I say that if you can use it without damaging the land underneath the easement, then I, the public should have the right to say that you can use the easement. But if you're going to do something that damages the land underneath, then the landowner should have this A O right. So recreational trails is another thing that's going to come into it. I, I kind of have the feeling that if people weren't abusing the roads, that the landowners would be much more willing to, to give permission for the recreational trails. So if we could get the big four-wheel-drive mud runners off of it, that would help a lot.
John, you had your hand raised. Sorry. You're muted still, John. Muted.
Thank you, Roberta, for taking the heat off me a little bit there, but snowmobile clubs and four-wheeler clubs as well are not strongly represented at this level against the landowner. And, and I am all for landowner rights if they own it, but some of them just close it down, just, hey, I don't want it, and, and don't leave a avenue for some of recreational. Where you may go through the road and access other parcels, but just to strong arm them is, is, is tough to deal with. I don't have a lot to say smoothly about that, but I just don't want to get left behind, because I don't come to the table with a, with a law firm with me. I've got a couple guys that just want to make a path to access a lake or pond or a restaurant or something. Thank you, Roberta.
I think, I think the record, the recreational use is gonna, I would like to have a conversation around that issue at some point, but I don't know that this is the time for that. I think we're on a little bit of a different topic, so I'll defer for that for another time, maybe, Jim, but I would like to talk about that issue a little bit at some point.
Rebecca, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thanks. And John highlighted one of the concerns that I think is a nexus as to where we can actually do some assistance in terms of that it, that because of the way the statute's written, there is an actual functional reason why there are problems in that statute. But one of the other things to be thinking about, and I know that this has been on Roberta's radar and is becoming a larger issue, is how we can actually use taxation and funds from taxation to repair a lot of these roads and assist folks post-extreme weather events. That's a huge issue within the state, and without that public easement, we are stripping the ability for communities to be able to be part of that assistance in communities, which can stem from everything from, you know, bridges that serve a single residence, and that's, that's kind of something to be thinking about as well, is who gets served by those roads, and is there an ability for individuals who are or would like to be served by that road to actually opt in? There's some mechanisms or a lack of mechanisms there within the road associations, but also thinking about what is necessary to be able to expend state and local funds on some of those repair, which can't happen without that public easement as well.
And federal dollars as well.
So the proposal was to simply change from, from private way to public easement throughout the road association statutes in thirty-one oh five and thirty-one oh six, which deal with the municipality's ability to go in and, and repair a public easement and work on a public easement, maintain it with, with the town needing vote. Does it sound like we'd be in unanimous, unanimous support on that, or no? It's sounding like no because of the issues that have been raised.
Right. I, I'm in favor of allowing, certainly allowing the municipality to, to spend any money they want to on a public easement. I, I, there's no, there's no issue there. I think the question then is only, can you force the landlords into a, into a road association of which they don't control the use? And that's the, that's a different issue, I think. And that's gonna be a hard one for, on the landowner's side to agree to without the ability to control the use, because the town will, can allow. It isn't clear to me that there's any limitation on anything, as long as you don't damage the road, anybody can go do anything they want down that road, apparently. Yeah, or that's the sense, and.
Can't ride an ATV down it, right?
You can ride an ATV down it.
Can you?
But damage to a public easement is still not allowable.
Right, but I mean, other than that, other than that, and, but I don't think I can ride my snowmobile out here on the, on the, on this town road, out, out here in front of my office, but you're saying, but if it's an easement, I can. And there's, there's those kind of issues that we need to resolve. But the idea that it's very different to being forced into a road association where you as a member of the road association have ability to control the use and being forced into it, and then say, go maintain this for the public, and every use that's imaginable now can occur on this, or the town can determine what, any use, but they're not a participant in the, in the cost. That's a hard one for landowners, and that, that will trip up, that, that will, that triggered at the legislature, and it will tr- trigger again unless we find another way around it, I think.
Yeah.
In a way, that's a lesser issue from the aspect that the way the word, the way the statutes are worded now, the, the road association statutes, you can already force a private landowner to be a member of a road association on a public easement. They just call it a private way, so it's less obvious. So in a way, changing the terminology to public easement doesn't change what you can do, it just makes it more obvious what you're doing.
Thank you.
As I said, maybe, maybe that'll make it more obvious that it's wrong.
That's, that's correct, but when it comes up to that, when it does come up to that, and I think we recognize that, though, that statute I don't think is used very often for this purpose. And when you go to correct that, that will trigger that full discussion. Maybe the legislature has to determine that, but I think it'd be hard for the legislature to force those landowners into it. Even though the statute apparently is there, although the language is unclear because of the terms.
Well, I think it's there because kind of a, a leftover. I was involved way back when, when the road associations first got modified. I, there had been a set of statutes on the book for, for, I don't know, a hundred years or more, saying that when there's a private way, the, uh, the landowners can get together and hire a road commissioner and divide up the cost of maintaining it. But what they were talking about back in the eighteen hundreds was they were talking about a situation where somebody owned a piece of land that was not yet connected to the public road system, and they needed a road so that they could get to and from market to get people to their mill or whatever. And so they would go to the town, and they'd say, you know, the, the landowners that I have to cross won't let me have a road, can you lay out a townway for me? And they would say, no, we have no reason for, we have no need for a townway, but if you will pay the cost of the taking of the land, we will lay out a private way for you. And these were invariably dead ends, which primarily served that one improved property. And it could be chalked up as a business expense. Yeah, I have to maintain the road so that people can get to my property, so it wasn't really a problem. But I then, you know, one thing came to another. They decide that it was unconstitutional to take a private way over somebody else's property unless that private way actually was a public road. Because you can take somebody's private land for a public use, but not for a private use. So they said, well, really, these, these aren't private, they're public. And then they changed the term to public easement. They said that the, the landowners don't own it, the public owns it. And all of a sudden, because of the way the statutes were worded, the whole set of statutes became sort of not applicable to anything, because the private landowners had to be the owners of the way in order to use the statutes. So that's when I, Betsy Bowen from Mara and a bunch of people in lake associations and I all went in, kind of lobbied the legislature to say, why don't we just change the wording so that these can be used to maintain private roads? And they accepted that idea, but sort of botched it in the wording. What they should have done was they should have taken out the term private way and said private road. And instead, what they said was that when there are landowners who la, own the land that's benefited by the private way, so the term private way got left in there. And it wasn't till years later that they put in the term private road as well as private way, and private way still kind of got hung in there. So that's why that term is in there in the first place, it kind of doesn't belong there. So uh, that's why that term is in there in the first place. It kind of doesn't belong there.
I I'm assuming there is no legal way to transfer the public easement to a right to a road association. That would ex- that somehow would allow the road association to manage and. Um, and you know, manage and also collect fees and things like that, but be the be the managing agency. Is that is that fair assessment? Because it's taking a public resource and not everybody gets it. But there's no legal way to do that, I assume, right?
So reverse takings, essentially you can pay for that, right? You have to pay the public for that.
Right, but but could there be a, could there be a transfer of this public easement to a road to in some way that where the where this? Hey, what value, that you already have to value if you if you if you discontinue a road, you have to value it. For purposes of damages.
Right.
Um, can you do the reverse and say, oh, the public, the the, you know, we're going to, it's going to a road association. The road association is acquiring these public rights. Um, and then that that road association then deals with the private, anybody that needs the use of it.
So that's extinguishing a public easement, which is basically discontinuance in reverse. And that discontinuance in reverse, that's that's in statute now, requires the same thing, renumeration for the extinguishment of a public right. So just like you get a takings from the discontinuance, you get a reverse taken, so that they would have to be the landowners that were benefiting from that would have to pay for that. Or repair or.
It would go back to the people who would become members of the road association in essence.
Right, right. Is there a legal way to structure that? And I understand that, you know, but I'm guessing that. In a lot of cases, those landowners would be willing to do that. And uh, if it doesn't serve a public purpose, can't we figure out some way to get that into that into that format?
They could do that now under thirty twenty six A. They could bring a petition to uh, discontinue the public easement, so they would give the right back. Uh, but.
That would go to every individual at that point, not to not, they could landlock everybody, correct?
Well, that's the problem.
Well, the way, yeah, the way that, uh, the the way that section thirty twenty six A is worded. Is that I, if they want to discontinue the public easement and it would leave anyone landlocked, then what they have to do is. See if the landowners will agree to grant each other a shared private easement and that's the way out. I, that way.
Including utilities.
But that requires, that requires everybody. What I'm thinking is if you could get it to the road association. Into the road association, this may be a dumb idea, so feel free to say so, or it's not legal. But if you could give it to the, get it to the road association, now the road association statute can kick in and say, hey, if you're, if you want use of this road. You know, you you have to be in, you're part of the association and we will assess you fees based upon, you know, whatever. Now, but now everybody who now has that use of that road now has a say in its in its and in the in its use. Is that a possible solution to this?
Yeah, I you can't really convey the public's right to use to a separate group and say you can now limit it and control it.
Well, and then extinguish, and then extinguish the public easement?
You'd have to extinguish the public easement. That's the only way that that I think Rebecca might agree that. That seems to be the only way that we can try to resolve that issue right now.
We we never discussed anything like this, right? I mean.
No.
My, I like, to me, that would be like ultra, ultra complicated to. To re- to take the uh, the public easement away. You'd have to, I don't know how you'd do it. And how you'd prove that it wouldn't be impacting people. And uh, but anyway, that I don't think that was a uh. I don't think we ever considered this.
Well, it's, it's been discussed a little bit, but the idea is that it's a property right, right now. There might be a public access, a right of public access that the municipality holds that allows Jim to get to and from his property, that if you take it. If you if you get rid of it, you've now damaged me because I don't have a, I don't have a right of way in my deed to get to the property. And so you would, you have to compensate me for that loss of access. Uh, if we all agreed. My neighbors and I agreed that, well, okay, that the public right will go away, we'll give each other cross easements, great. But then you've got the mythical person from Massachusetts who owns property on both sides in the middle of the road and won't agree with anybody and then we're in trouble.
Yeah.
I don't need to pick on Massachusetts.
There's no way to to take that public easement. I understand it's a public right.
Right.
There's no way to. To.
Pay responsibility to it to someone else.
Some or some to to the road associate.
Not that we can think of.
That's a constitutional issue then.
Right.
But it's also, it also goes back to Rebecca's comment a while ago. If we if we extinguish the public easement. Then we're also extinguishing the ability to access funding for road repairs. When they do become available from the municipality, uh, the state of the federal government, like you referenced the disaster. Rebecca, you know, disaster declaration, public easements are eligible, but I think of like. You know, municipality going after some federal discretionary funding for a specific project on a road that is a public easement. They wouldn't be able to do that, right? If it's not a public easement.
Yeah, and and specifically, I think one of the things in Maine that we might be more concerned with too, and Steve and John might be able to weigh in on this, is that. It's only the people that are in that municipality, they're going to be voting on that easement because you can discontinue an easement. But if you have a trail that, you know, is is important for the rest of the public to be able to access, if you've offended somebody within. That municipality and get the entire municipality, they're the only ones with a voice to vote on the extinguishment of that public easement. Because they're the only ones that have have most of the responsibility for defending it legally. It's not like it's a state level. Um, easement, and maybe that's what we propose, like, how how about the state just take over all the public easements, right? And maintain them, but um, I I can see that being used more maliciously than benevolently. Not that I'm a cynic or anything, but.
Okay, Roberta.
I have yet to see any public funds get spent for disaster relief on any of these discontinued roads. I know there have had bridges out and things like that and I have not seen it.
Well, I can tell you, Roberta, in two thousand and seven or eight, we got a FEMA grant. Or a portion of the road that I live on, that was uh, declared, you know, part of the disaster. And I think we got over a hundred thousand dollars from FEMA uh, to make repairs, so it has happened. I don't know. All, it has happened.
Yeah, it's it's happening right now as well in a lot of communities in northern Somerset County that have suffered and it's just, it really, it takes. Uh, almost a year before you find out if you've missed a checkbox on the federal application.
But are are these roads that the municipalities are maintaining anyway?
These are easements that are access to folks' homes.
Right, but they're main, are they maintaining them now? Because these aren't, these aren't just like. Ro- roads are not involved in at all and all of a sudden there's money available, so they go and build a bridge, right?
Yeah, these are, they're completely eliminated as a result of those last storms, requiring people to drive fifteen miles around in order to get to them. And the town is applying for those funds in order to be able to do it because it doesn't have the ability to raise the money or or access funds now currently. So they've filed under the FEMA de- declaration to be able to go in.
Right, I but I'm I'm saying these aren't roads though that are that they're currently got on their list that they're a plant they're maintaining. These are, these are not old discontinued roads or with a public easement that nobody's and public funds have been spent on for years. And all of a sudden, the bridge blows out and they're going to apply for money to put a bridge in, right?
It is a hundred percent not. Because right now, the only alternative is for them to go around fifteen miles to the maintained public road.
But I think, I think what Tom's asking is, has the public been spending money on these roads until this point?
Oh, up until this. No, no, no.
That's what I'm saying, is so I think that makes the point, is highly unlikely that they've never spent any money on this road and suddenly the bridge blows out. And suddenly they're going to spend a whole bunch of of uh, of money on that, that's not, never had any money put into it. It'll be the ones that have been maintained or have, has been some public funds, but.
No, as I, as I said, these roads were not maintained. These are roads that didn't have that, but they have the easement, so they've gone back now because there is severe damage. That requires those people to go fifteen miles around to the maintained public easement to be able to access them. So they are repairing that section and probably will assume that road going forward. But currently, it's the public easement that allows them to repair that and make it easier for those folks to actually get to their.
Well, as as I understand it, there is sometimes some FEMA money available for private roads or privately owned roads, privately maintained roads. Uh, there was one year I was doing a a booth at one of the uh, emergency management uh, conferences. And I I was just trying to get the word out that, you know, these roads are a problem because they're often not maintained, which means that when you need emergency access. They're not usable. And a woman came up to me and she was from, I believe it was from FEMA. Uh, and she said, you are exactly the person I'm looking for. We're looking for these types of roads that need funding. And we don't care what the status of the road is. And I, so I thought this was going to be great. I put a couple of people in touch with her and it turned out that. There was a very short window for that batch of funding and by the time they were able to find out about it, the window had closed. But apparently there is some program someplace that will, at least in some cases, do privately owned roads.
Well, we circled around a lot on this one, uh, but I I don't know if we're ready to take a vote or if we want to put this to kick this to the side and work on it some more.
Why don't we try a vote and if it fails, we'll work on it some more.
Okay, the proposal right now is to change public way to public easement in all of the road association. Uh, statutes in title twenty three. Do we have a motion to approve that? The draft is in the draft report.
I move to uh, to go that way.
Okay, Steve in favor? Is there a second? We at least need a second to bring it to.
I think John's saying second, but he's muted.
I'm sorry. John, was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, sir, thank you. All right, then we have a roll call vote, please.
Peter Coughlin. You're muted, Pete.
Muted.
Yes.
Tom Doak.
No, but I'm willing to have more conversation on this, just try to make it something different.
Rebecca Graham.
Yes.
Joe's out. James Katsiafikis.
Yes.
Chris is out still. Roberta Minter.
Can I abstain so as not to upset everybody else?
Vivian McCaffrey.
I apologize, I had to multitask, so I am out of the loop on what our vote is. I'm sorry.
Our our vote was to appoint you to, no, I've um. Our our vote was to to amend the title twenty three road association standards to change private way to public easement uh, as proposed in the draft.
Oh, yes.
John Monk.
Yes.
Catherine is out. Ryan.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
So it's, it's seven with one no and one abstention, so I.
A very important rule that we put into effect at the beginning of this year's work was that we are not going to send anything onto the legislature that we are not unanimously behind. Uh, we don't want to embarrass ourselves going in front of the legislature and having fraction, you know, fractured. Uh, support on our group. We want to make sure that it's something that we can sell to the legislature and we're behind. So uh, I think uh, given the concerns, uh. Perhaps the best thing is if I try to work with Tom and Roberta to see if we can come back with some uh, something that makes sense. We may not have it in time for the February report. If so, it's still an ongoing piece of work. This is a standing committee. We are not going to solve all of the problems this session. So we'll solve what we can. So uh, with that, does that, does that work? That I'll continue to work with Tom and Roberta and see if we have something to bring back?
And and I just want to show the group, I I'm not, I'm not trying to block anything, I'm just, I can't support it the way it is.
Understood, and and you know, the initially, the way these statutes read, they've sent simply private ways. And it was wrong because the first four sections all pertained to private roads.
Right.
And I proposed a change to that and MMA brought it forward. And it was then changed to private ways and private roads, which was not what I had intended and. That, not that that I have any say in this, but you know, that 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 wasn't what was intended. The idea there's, it was always meant to be private roads and deal with private road associations um, for the first four sections and then. Public easements that towns have the right, but not the obligation to maintain in thirty one oh five. It, we have to try to somehow unwind that and see if we can fix it to to get to the real problem and not cause more problems, so understood.
Fair enough.
Okay. I'd like to get back to what we were talking about in, what we were supposed to talk about number six. One of the things that the legislature asked us to do this session, and sorry, I've got too many stacks of paper here in the. In my makeshift office here, um. One of the things that they asked us to do was to provide options to create a road inventory of abandoned and discontinued roads in the state. Now, Pete Coughlin has told us about a wonderful thing that the map viewer that Maine DOT has, and it's it is wonderful. The idea is that if you want to find out about publicly maintained roads, you can go online. To Maine DOT's website and you can find out about whe- whether a road is publicly maintained. Unfortunately, what that doesn't tell you, and it's not his fault, it is the legal status of that road. Is it publicly maintained because it's a townway and the town has to maintain it? Is it publicly maintained because it's a public easement that this year the town meeting has authorized to be fixed and may not next year? You 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 don't really know, it it doesn't tell you the legal status and so when you go and buy that house, you don't know whether you have a right to. Rely on the public maintenance of that road. And so uh, if we had a an inventory of abandoned and discontinued roads in the state. And knew where public easements existed, at least people could be on uh, on notice that they should do some investigation. Excuse me, I'm I'm just getting over about here and coughing happens, I'm sorry, um. What, where would you go? Where would you propose to put that information? If if the idea were to try to make consumers informed, landowners, realtors, attorneys. Uh, municipal officials, state officials, county officials, as to what the status of the road is, would you want to see a central? Location for all of that information, uh, un- unlike the, you know, the the county, the the registry of deeds situation where you have to look at sixteen different websites?
Yeah.
Roberta?
Um, there's already at the DOT, there is, I, in the division of rights away. They have a catalog of all the county actions on roads, which includes. I discontinued roads, road layouts, road alterations, I petitions to do anything with a road. I, and there's, there's an index that gives the book and page number on which you can find the record for each one.
Yeah, that's not online that we that we know about.
Well, yes and no. I, if you go to the DOT map viewer and you click on one of these discontinued county roads. I, if you know which layer to activate, I, it will tell you whether a road ever was a county road. And it lists not only the ones that are still there that are county roads, but it also lists the ones that aren't still there that were county roads. And if you click on one of those, it will give you a code number with a D on the end of it and the D signifies discontinuance. And then what you can do is you can get in touch with the division of rights away and ask them for that code number. And they will send you a copy of the uh, book and page number on which that road is discontinued. So you can see whether it says discontinued with a private way retained, or if it just says discontinued, or if it says they voted not to discontinue it. Or whatever, uh, you can also on the same, the same page get the layout for that road. Which will give you a description of when the road was laid out. I, so for county roads, we have a central location. And I keep saying that that ought to be where we file the records of town discontinuances as well. And it wouldn't necessarily have to take up a lot of space. You wouldn't necessarily have to bring in all the records from those towns. All you would need would be an index similar to what the DOT has for the county roads. That would just list the town, the book and the page number and what the action was and the name of the road or description of the road. And then you could take that and go back to the town and say, okay, I need your record for. Your annual report for the year nineteen forty two, uh, article number such and such. And they should be able to pull it right up and here's the record. I, I don't think it would take up a lot of space. And one of the things that I I really loved about that uh, twenty sixteen survey that Rebecca just sent us. Is that they said that I think it was forty four percent of towns have already at least started doing an inventory of their abandoned and discontinued roads. And for years, we've been saying, oh, no, no, you can't ask towns to do that. It would cost too much. It would be too much of a headache. You don't know what the status of the roads are. It takes a, an attorney or a court action to determine. No, we're not asking them to to determine that. We're just saying, make a catalog of where the records are. And then when somebody asks a question, somebody comes in and says, I want to. And then when somebody asks a question, somebody comes in and says, I want to buy a piece of property on this road. It doesn't look like it's been maintained in Ohio. What's the story on it? Then you can go to that record book, pull out that record because you know, know where to find it. And say, okay, take this to your attorney and see what he says the status of the road is. Or see if it needs to go to court or see if it's one of the ones that's pretty straightforward. Um, lots of these don't really need to go to court. You can look at the, the, uh, discontinuance order and it's pretty specific. It says this road was discontinued from this point to that point and no easement retained. And I, you know, so they, it doesn't have to be as complicated as we seem to make it, uh, sound as if it is. Um, so I, I think the DOT should at least have a catalog of, you know, towns that have already done an inventory. If they can just tell us the book and page numbers of where to find those actions. And I can give you some examples of towns that, that.
Well, that's okay. The, the, the idea right here is to create options. And, and so one idea would be to, uh. To add on to the DOT's DOT right of way existing index of county discontinuances. And what you would ask municipalities to send the information they have to DOT so that it could be added to the catalog. So.
Ju- just send the book and page numbers. They don't have to send the records themselves, but if, if there was a central location. Where you could go and say, what's the story on this road? Okay, this road was discontinued on this book, this page number. Go back to the town and get a copy of it.
Okay, so that's an option. That we could potentially identify. Uh, are there other ideas as to? Where this, where this central registry might be and who might maintain it?
Isn't the one of the, isn't one of the challenges really about, um. That would work potentially with discontinuance where there's been a recording in, in the registry of the discontinuance order. Right? But there's a whole, but that's a small, relatively small subset, I think of, of them, right? So we have to figure out a way to. You know, there, it's clear that, you know, some of these were, there were town roads. That weren't, they, there's no dispute, they were town roads. The problem is, what is the status of that road today, right? And particularly on an abandonment, you have no idea. Uh. And there was, as you know, there was a, the legislature did ask the towns to, municipalities to do, to do this work. And they, none of them did. Uh, and they didn't put it as a mandate because they, it would have been. You know, it was a, it was a two-thirds vote, but. That is one of the challenges for a lot of, there's just no, and a lot of times you just don't know. The town doesn't know or hasn't spent the time to know and. But, uh, abandonment is the hard one. Um. I don't know, I, but there should, I think there should be someplace where people could go ideally. And maybe it's to build on that registry that I've never, I've never heard of, but. If a town has made a determination on it, on a discontinuer or abandonment, there should be someplace at least. That is recorded inside or identified as a determination, I would think.
Rebecca has her hand raised, sorry.
Thanks Heather. I just wanted to point out that. As, as you saw, towns do do this. The problem is that there are some roads that they don't and cannot determine without a final legal determination. There are still continued and will always be the ability for them to finalize and continual and have an appeal based upon. What that community determines. Whether or not they have an easement on it, whether or not it's discontinued. Those are all arguable points until. The judiciary has made a final ruling on that. So what they've done is to the extent possible, and you also see from that survey. That it's extremely challenging and it costs a lot of money, which is why the, the legislature didn't do that because it's a mandate. Because they would have to pay for that and they'd have to pay to do that work. So there has to be, have been a value to do that. I don't think that there's necessarily, that that's necessarily the right tract. I think that if that is something that is of state significance and state value, then the state should be helping and paying to support that work, hundred percent.
So what would MMA's, uh. Thought for an option to create a road inventory of abandoned and discontinued roads look like? Recognizing that, yeah, discontinuance, there's an order someplace. Abandonment happens. Because no one's taking care of the road or no one's using the road, no one's spent money on it. But there are some situations where municipalities have made determinations that the road's presumptively abandoned by statute. Where, where, how would you suggest we create an inventory of that?
I, I think we've got to collect the funds and pay for the necessary work that is required to do that.
And who would do?
I mean, it's. If you want communities to report, if you want communities to research, if you want communities to finalize. Then you need to have the state fund that activity and then determine where that central reporting is. If they are already reporting to Pete, the materials that they maintain. That's already known. They've already done it in one central place. If they are reporting, place to E nine one one bureau that someone lives on that road. Then that is already done. I don't know, like if there's a nexus that isn't getting reported through that. Then that's something that needs to get funded, but I also don't think that municipalities need to be the go-between. For separate state entities. I mean, if the, if it resides at the state level, they should be able to share that information. And maybe the, the first place we start with is that location. But the other determinations require legal work, legal challenge. Deed registry, they are essentially title reviews of property. We pay for title reviews for our property when we purchase a piece of real estate. I'm not sure that we should assume that local property taxpayers are going to pay for a title search so that the state can have a list. I think it would be a great for the state to maybe, I don't know, even present that as an option for attorneys at main law.
For the municipalities that have voluntarily put together road inventories that would indicate book and page number of discontinuances. And lengths of roads discontinued and abandoned, uh, how harmful and expensive would it be for them to send a copy of that to Augusta?
I think that, again, we're back at that, go ahead, just like tell them that they can do that, but that doesn't mean it's a final determination. And again, it's.
Nobody's asking, yeah, no one's asking for the municipality to say it's a final determination. The question is, what do you have in your records?
So, my question again would be like, what isn't getting recorded? What is it that you're trying to get at that's information that isn't recorded elsewhere? If the discontinuance is recorded and there are residences on there. Then what is the information that necessarily isn't captured elsewhere?
Is there a public easement? Do you maintain?
May or may not be known.
Do you maintain? Okay. And if you know it, great. And if you don't, you don't. Um, what about, well, okay, so.
Jim, before you go on.
Registry, what do we think about that? Somebody's got to pay for it.
Roberta and Tom have their hands raised. Roberta was first and then it was Tom. Roberta, you're muted. Oh, no, okay.
Uh, I, first of all, I, I think it would be great if we could get state funding to do the research. It'd be great if you could get an intern to, to sit down at the state library and just start going through town reports and looking for stuff. You know, I, I've done a lot of that for a lot of towns. Uh, it's easier for me to do it at the state library than to go to the towns in most cases. Uh, you have to call ahead and ask them to bring it in from remote storage because they're in temporary quarters right now. But they have an excellent collection of, of town reports from most of the towns in the state. Um. So, uh, that's one piece of it is, is the funding. But the other thing is Rebecca, you keep saying that, I, this is terribly expensive to do all the research. And I understand that. There are cases where, uh, you can't figure out from the record exactly what was meant. Or where the record is unclear, even where the road is. It says it goes from, uh, Joe's barn to the big stump by the state aid road. Who knows where either of those landmarks were? So you don't know which road you're talking about. But I'm not asking the towns to come up with that. All I'm asking is. Find the book and page number where each of these records is, so that when somebody comes to you and says, what is the status of this road? You can say, here are the records we've got. Here's, you know, this road says on such and such book and page. This is, this is what the town voted. You can take that to your attorney. You can have your attorney do it. You know, then the town isn't going to be suffering that expense. But if you can at least start with that. That would save hours of work because what happens now is somebody gets in touch with me and they say, I'm trying to figure out the status of this road. The town doesn't know, uh, the town won't let me look at their records. Uh, the town doesn't want to do the, the hours of research that it will take to find the records. So I end up going down to the state library and I spend a couple of days going through annual reports, noting down every place that I find a record of a discontinued road. And I always tell people, if you do this for yourself, write down every one that you find. Don't just write down the one that you find that is yours. Because two reasons. One is you will then have a database that somebody else could look at if there's another road that, that they need to know about. And sometimes the name of the road changes. So you may find a discontinuance for Oak Hill Road. And you don't think that's the one you're looking for because you're looking for Young Road. And you keep on going and years later you find out, oh, did you know that Young Road used to be called Oak Hill Road? Wait a minute, I think I saw a discontinuance for that someplace. Where was it? So you just go through and you write down the, the, uh, the year and the, the number of the warrant article. And then you know where to find it. That's the starting point. That's all I'm asking for. And yeah, it takes some time, but it doesn't require having an attorney. It doesn't require going to court. It doesn't require interpreting what that record means. It just says, here is the record. Now you've got a starting point. Now you can go to your attorney or whatever. And that's all we're asking for is just where to find the records. Catalog that and that'll be a huge start.
So what you're asking for is a freedom of access. Freedom of access to information, so that it is publicly available. It requires somebody to be paid to do that research locally. And those are requests that are funded by the requester. In any other setting. So what we're saying is, this is great. We need funding to do that work. And maybe that shouldn't be you. Maybe that should be the state that is funding that work where it exists. If they have already done the inventory, we've, we have for multiple years. Jim, you probably wrote the. The recommendations on how to do a road inventory, noting that the final legal disposition. Whether or not you declaim it, it doesn't mean that it's going to maintain that way, but it's a place to start. There are many communities that have done that and they have already submitted a lot of those, of that information. So what I'm saying is there is a cost to that. I understand what you're asking for. There's a cost to that in every other setting. Where there is even less history, there is a significant cost and burden for looking up those records. And for compiling those records and for administering that request. And the state recognizes that. And they recognize that there's a small amount that should be donated for free, but there is an actual cost and access and a burden. So. Whether that's the state that collects that. That's great, but it's not something that they can do for free. If they've already done that work and they want to turn that into a central location, that's a completely different discussion. Than if they haven't done that work or if they haven't completed that work. Or if they don't even know where to start with it. Two completely different spectrums there.
Tom?
What I'm, what I'm.
Or, I, I understand, but Tom's got his hand up as well. It's.
Well, this is a frustrating issue from, from a landlord point of view, and I think. On the roads where. It was clear the town had a road. It was a town road. It's, it's frustrating to landlords say, well, to, for, here from the towns, well, we really don't know what that status is. It was, it was your responsibility to, to have it and hold it. It's kind of like, I said to Pete Coffin, I said, gee. Like, well, it was DOT had the road. Now we don't, we really don't know what happened to the road. So it's, and the reality is, I know this, this, it's, the records are terrible in a lot of cases. The towns don't have the information or they lost it or whatever. But the frustrating part from a landlord point of view is being told, well, we don't really know. It was a town road, yes. We don't know if it still is. Or it's a, what the status of it is. We don't know. So go figure it out yourselves. And that's the frustrating part. I think there's a. I'm not quite sure what the solution to that is, but. There is some responsibility that should, that they are for at least assisting in this issue, it seems to me, because they were town, they were town roads. They were town assets.
Sometimes, not always.
Well, but I'm saying of those that were clearly not in dispute that they were town assets. There's, it's an inventory, you know, whether it's the fire truck or a road. So, but that's, that's the reality of the situation. But I think, isn't there, the statute does read or something about. The towns can make the determination and that determination stays until a court decides otherwise, right? And so.
That goes with regard to statutorily abandoned roads.
Right. So should there be a similar type of thing? On, on where there's a, that would include abandonment as well, for example, make a determination. I, I think one of our proposals in the past was that municipalities should make their, you know, should, should declare the status where it's clearly. Where, they're based on their best information. And make that determination and let that kind of at least be the starting point of the status of that road. So that then, and, and share whatever information, maybe it's like, we don't know, we have no information, but there's no record that there's been any maintenance for thirty years. We checked our records and there's no maintenance, so we assumed it was abandoned. Or something to move this along a little bit so that we, it isn't always falling to the landowners to, to. To landowners squabbling over the road. I think that might be helpful. And then if there is an inventory done in a town. That they've declared intention, it, it would be nice to know where that, where, where is that information? You know, how is that most publicly available to anybody that wants to see it? I, I mean, if that's already work that's done, that's just a matter of getting it in a format where it's easily found and people know it exists. But I also think that there should be something, some encouragement, the least initial status of this is what we know. About the status, that were clearly town roads at some point.
So they weren't all town roads, Tom. I know you know that and.
I know, I understand.
And abandonment is now discontinuance by another name. So.
And all this, but I mean, they, they were in the public ownership. They were in the, there was a public ownership that existed. And now, the, the private landlords are saying, what happened to that public ownership? And the answer sometimes is, well, we don't know. We don't know and we don't, you go figure it out.
But you know if it's not, if it's been maintained or not. Like you know if that road's being maintained, but you as a landowner. Also should have some sort of understanding of that, right?
I'm just asking the municipalities spend a little more effort to determine what they did to the road. What the status of, of the asset they held in their hands, what that is.
Don't. That's the thing. They don't hold it in their hands and they were gifted them at a couple of points.
By the counties, by the legislative, the county roads, I get that. But I'm talking about town roads as well.
But town roads do have, there's a, there's a centralized location for town roads. This is, I'm trying to nuance what is it that you're asking, because there is a centralized location for the town roads.
Where's the centralized?
Centralized location for.
Where is that?
DOT.
Oh, those are the ones they're maintaining.
But that's a town road.
But, but.
Not necessarily. There could be public easements that the towns maintaining. It'd also show up on the map viewer that people are talking about.
Right, because they have a residence on them.
Well, or, or whatever, that, that there are public easements that are being maintained. And, you know, if, if I'm buying a house on a public easement. Where the town has the right, but not the obligation to maintain, they may be maintaining it the year I buy and maybe decide not to the year after. And, you know, that, that's something that a landowner wouldn't necessarily know. Unless you knew what the status of the road was as a legal matter. So the question is. The town, say the town has already put together its road inventory, it's done what MMA's attorneys have suggested. And done what was right and they have their turn, their road inventory together. Who do they give it to? Where does it get added and where can it be accessed publicly? That's really the question I, I have here and I don't know how others see it.
Can I jump in here again? Um, Rebecca, you keep saying there is a central location, but. I'm going to give you a, a scenario here. Suppose somebody wants to buy a piece of property. It's on a road that isn't being maintained, so it's not on the DOT site as being a maintained road. They come to the town and they say, what's the status of this road? And the town says, oh, that was discontinued years ago. Well, can I see the record? Which would you rather? Would you rather now have to start looking through all your annual reports, looking for where that record is? Or would you rather be able to say, go to the DOT, they've got the index. When you find out what book and page it's on, we'll, we'll give you that book and page. If it were in one place, whether it's at the DOT or maybe at the state library where they've got all those annual reports. If there's one place where a person can go and say, I need the record for this road. And they have it cataloged, they have it on a map or whatever. And you can say, oh, this was discontinued on this book and page number. And that's all you have to ask the town for. The town doesn't have to go looking through all those reports because it's already on a list. And you give the town just that book and page number and they can look it up. It would save the town so much time. And I know it means that somebody has to have done the work initially and I agree that if we could get state funding to do that. And I know it means that somebody has to have done the work initially, and I agree that if we could get state funding to do that, that would be great. But there are these forty-four percent of towns who have already at least started on inventory. Even if you don't have all of them, even if you don't have the fringe ones, the ones where there's a a question as to where the road is or what the the wording meant, if they said closed instead of discontinued. Or if they said gates and bars, but didn't say private way. Or if it's one of these roads Jim is talking about where maybe the town is maintaining it this year, but it's a public easement. Never mind about those fringe ones. Just take the ones that you know and have them in a catalog where they're easy to find. That's all I'm asking for.
Just gonna go back to what the single point is and that someone has to do the work and someone needs to be adequately compensated to do something that is of a state priority. Whether that where that lives is pretty is is really not an argument. Whether or not there is value for an individual isn't really part of the argument because we did already recognize that we have now created a central disposition. We have a we have a statutory requirement that people who are selling property identify that themselves. We are saying that they're not doing it somehow or they're not meeting that standard somehow. So we have this centralized location with all of the lists of roads now that Pete has acquired. We know what is publicly maintained. So this is another level, but again, we need to have that material. And we need to not be repetitive. So it doesn't, it shouldn't necessarily live in Pete's place and someplace else. If there is an additional value or we can create a GIS layer for the state using existing LiDAR, that that would be great, but someone still has to start with collecting that information and making some decisions that are going to open up a lot of local legal arguments that may or may not be necessary currently, but certainly will be when we start having towns designate them. So just having adequate funds to prepare communities for being able to collect something that is going to open them up to some legal battles is, I think, vitally important. And I
I assume that municipalities have already put together voluntarily their road inventories and haven't been sued over the inventories. Uh that the inventories only contain those things that don't create problems. If that information were passed along, fine, I here's here's what the legislature asked. Options to create a road inventory of abandoned and discontinued roads in the state. We do not have an inventory of abandoned and discontinued roads in the state. What DOT maintains is an inventory of publicly maintained roads without whether they're townways, public easements left over after abandonment or discontinuance, just publicly maintained ways. And if I go into any Public Works Garage, I'm going to find a list of those roads that the municipality is going to plow in those and it's not going to because they're not townways or public easements that the town has voted to maintain. And that's the information Pete has now.
If they are, and you know, there are a number of roads that have been discontinued. You're only going to tell that by lot. There are there are roads that I'm finding in my in my own community that you only find when you start looking and digging on the parcel level. They're not anyplace else. So I don't know that the abandoned piece, unless there's been a formal designation, even needs to be part of that. Because they may have been long abandoned before the community even got into that.
Yeah, I guess the ask is not to to go out and do legal research on every road near municipality. The 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 question is, if you have the information, can you pass it along? And then if you do, where does it go? And I think that's that's why Pete's on. I think that's why Megan's on as well uh on this call. And and it'd be interesting to hear from the department of of from the main department of transportation uh how they feel about this because I think everyone's looking for some kind of ease. Where do you place this that everyone will look for it and everyone will contribute to it? Uh but we also understand that there's a burden to an agency to doing that. We're going to be giving options to the legislature. The legislature has to define decide ultimately where it's going to go and how it's going to get funded. Pete, Megan?
Yeah, so Jim, let me add in here. Um for decades now, the state puts up local road assistance money, twenty million dollars a year plus. That is written so that we pay we pay towns for roads that they maintain. We don't know what the legal status is. If they tell us they maintain it, then one would assume they're probably townways and public easements. We don't get into the legal status of things. All we know is what you maintain. When it comes to those uh records that Rebecca was, I mean, um Roberta was talking about up in property. Our property office up the next stairs here. Yes, they have a lot, have a couple of file cabinets of discontinued county ways. They're not town road records. And they're old. In fact, if you pull the file out, you find tracing paper with pencils and old pin fed computer paper printouts. It's old stuff. There's I don't think there's anything new up there at all. And I don't know enough about the property office to know why they kept those. It had something to do with whatever was going on decades ago. And they still usually they still occasionally use those for state DOT projects. Yeah, so Roberta's got an example right there. And it's got book and page numbers in there for county discontinuances. Other than that, you know, the number of towns that discontinue roads every year is small. Um and as we put in the statutes a couple of years ago, that when a town follows the process, they have to send a copy to the registry at the county and to DOT Maintenance and Operations Office where I used to work upstairs. I have probably in the whatever it's been, six, seven years now that that's been in place. I routinely every year get zero to one copy. It's not much. And I keep those in my file here with me. I don't bring them up to the property office. Maybe I should. Uh the property office, as I've talked to the last couple of days, is happy to receive any sort of discontinuance order from any town to put in that file. But we're not gonna we're not going to create databases. We're not going to start GIS layers. That's not the focus of main DOT. That's just not something the property office is set up to do.
So I'll jump in. Um I I would agree with everything that Pete just said. Um for those on this call that don't know me, my name's Megan Russo. I'm the Director of Government Affairs here, DOT. Um Pete has kind of been our our uh person, as you know, that's that's representative of the department on this commission. Looking, I I've read the report, the draft report. Uh great job, Jim. It's very well written. If that's if it's you that put this together. I I do have a few concerns and sections that we can, you know, talk offline if you want. If you wanted us to give you some input on revisions. Um I understand your comments to to Pete in terms of the job of this commission is to put forward all of the recommendations um from from the all the options from the that this commission identifies as potential options for the this information to be housed. I you know, there is a section in the report that it looks like the report is recommending uh the that the commission is recommending that DOT be that option that we that we house this information. At first, when I was talking to Pete and kind of through email chains, I was getting the impression that the 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 idea was that we create some sort of website that all of the files upstairs that we have be digitalized and that we try to track down all this information from various towns on on local roads. Um and that we kind of become the the person that's spearheading this. And I don't know if that's accurate. Uh I think from the conversations you all are having right now, it seems like you're you're it might turn into a mandate on towns to send us this information. So I I guess depending on where the conversation goes, uh if if we were required to put together a a website and to track down all this information, the department would be opposed to such a proposal. Um I would have to at that point recommend to the governor's office that that we as a department come out in vocal opposition. And I don't think, just from what you said, Jim, at the beginning of this conversation, I don't think that's where you want things to go. So um with that being said, I'm happy to work offline with anyone on potential language that we would be okay with um and to continue to the the discussion.
Thank you. Uh Tom?
Well, I'm not sure what to make of all that, but um I was going to ask the question about, I I'm familiar with the with the map view database that DOT has and has the roads on there that are maintained. And I was going to ask the question that would it, what kind of problem would it be if the if municipality had identified the status of a road that could be even a different color? It says, you know, the municipalities indicate that this is a discontinued road with a public easement or something on it, something like that, that would be a spot where people could go and look. Otherwise, I think you go to five hundred different towns and try to get the information or and I'm not sure, I'm sure in every town is probably held differently. And I think we're trying to get whatever information is available and has already been kind of determined, it would be nice to be easily accessible someplace. And I was trying to figure out whether, you know, not having DOT certify that that's correct information, but simply I was looking at one before the meeting started of a property we own that the the town has told us both it's been discontinued and abandoned, depending on what who you talk to. And it's not on, I looked, it's not on the DOT list. And but I I just thought, gee, if the town does determine it is discontinued or abandoned, I could look at it and it would show the road and say, you know, as reported by the town, this section of this road is is a is the discontinued town road with a public easement, if that's been determined by the town. I don't mean gone through some long legal fight. I mean, the town has determined that, and I think there's a presumption, isn't there in the statute? Well, we could make it a presumption in the abandonment that 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 holds true and abandonment until until some other action has taken place. But I mean, I think if there's already information available, it's all hidden. And so let's get it out there at least to help people that might need it to not to at least find it. So that's my, I guess that's my thought.
So Tom, keep in mind too, and I think everyone else knows this, is that when you look at map viewer and you see the red roads, the green roads, the blue roads. Those are all public roads and those are all publicly maintained. And then you'll see some ones are that are whited out. Uh they're just kind of gray. That is information coming directly from um the nine one one bureau, emergency services, because people live on these roads. They're just not maintained. So again, we don't know the legal status of them. It's just someone lives there and there's some addressing on there. So that's a good thing to know, but it doesn't answer your question. So I would say that, you know, if a town discontinued a road and we were to pursue this action and show discontinued roads on map viewer. And Meg, I'm going all limb here without talking to Nate or any of those people over in our data office. But because it's so infrequent that if we were asked to create a discontinuance layer on map viewer for things going forward, that would require very little work to put that on there and label it that way. But if someone's asking us to suddenly become the repository and create all kinds of work for all the past discontinuances for the last ten years or twenty years. And all of a sudden we get buried with these things, that's not something we're set up to do or even have a desire to do because it's not in our mission.
Yeah, I agree with you, Pete. Going forward, I don't think it would be, you know, from here on out, anytime that a town formally discontinues a road or you know, takes any action and sends us that information, we could certainly, I think, easily add it to our public map viewer for the public to access.
Yeah.
The problem is that the bulk of discontinuances happened years ago and that's what that's what's created the problem that the legislature's throwing on our plate. Well, I'm just gonna ask one quick question before. I know some other folks have questions. Uh and and Ryan just got up from his chair, so here I am about to throw him under the bus. But if we if we're not going to house this if if we're not going to house this information in with DOT, and I I understand you have your mission and and you know, we were just trying to think, where does it go? There is a local road center. There is a map viewer. That might be a logical place. That was what was informing the discussion. Nothing goes forward unless it's unanimous. So if you're not in favor, it it doesn't happen. With how would the counties feel since this is something like what the registry does to to also have a and well, to have an obligation to to house whatever information municipalities should give it and on discontinuance and abandonment to make it available to the public?
Are you asking uh to repository it somewhere like in the registry or or? So
Possibly.
Yeah, so with the exception of Cumberland County, every registry, every registrar is elected. Um and so the county commissioners' offices can't direct fifteen of the sixteen counties anyway to do anything that the main registers of deeds association wouldn't be willing to uh to do. So that would be another layer that you'd almost have to involve them. If you were to say the county commissioners, possibly, I can tell you that you know, county, the county commissioners' records that have a lot of this stuff already is oftentimes vaulted away in some dark dungeon in the basement of a courthouse or in in one case up here in the attic of a courthouse. Uh we actually turned over a lot of our archives that we didn't need anymore uh to the University of Maine Prescott Isle uh library. But I'm not suggesting that we try to involve the university system. I guess I'm going around the answer by saying it's something we probably could talk about and entertain. I just don't know which office or which location would be best suited to do that at the county level.
Hey, Ryan, when someone comes into a county commissioner's office or the registry, I I need to find out about this road that I'm thinking about buying some property on. Is that indexed or filed somewhere like under roads or discontinued roads? Or is it by municipal name? Or is there a date? Or is it just stuck in a dark damn vault somewhere?
In in the in the case of uh yeah, Roberta's holding up county roads, but but I think you're referring to roads that are also in the municipality somewhere that might be recorded at the registry. In the case of old county records that are in county offices, that request is far and few between, at least here. We don't get a lot of those people coming in and asking. Uh but when we do, it's usually someone who's been hired by somebody who's bought property and they want a survey done. And the surveyors are the ones that know quite a bit more about where to look for stuff than than we do in our office. Um at the registry level, there's going to be a book and page assigned to anything that's recorded. Um and you know, in the case of discontinuances, those are recorded like any document is at the registry and it's assigned a book and page. Um not every county uses the same software, so the searchability of that online, uh like in our case, only goes back to nineteen sixty online. Uh prior to that, here anyway, it's it's you've got to come in and look at the physical uh books in the registry to find something. And there is an index for every book, but you kind of have to have a general idea of what you're looking for uh before you just walk in and, you know, blindly start looking for something in the registry deeds beyond nineteen sixty.
I'm going to suggest something. We've been talking for an hour and forty-five minutes. How about if we take a five to ten minute break?
Did I get my quick question? And I've had my hand up for a bit here.
I'm sorry, Steve. Go ahead.
Um I would just like, there's a lot of effort on or a lot of discussion on trying to get the information from the towns. So that the public can access it. I think Rebecca's right on as far as like, there's a lot of work to be done. I don't know about the rest of the state, but I can guarantee you in Northern Maine, like related to a discontinued abandoned roads and things. I bet you those those records aren't very much available. And um and not not readily available anymore anyway. So we certainly don't want to build up any, you know, expectation with the public. They're going to be able to get here and go online and find out the status of all the roads in their in their community unless there's a concerted effort. And I I agree with Rebecca, you have to have, this is money. Somebody's gonna have to spend some money to get this into a form for somebody. So that's what I wanted to say. And I was just wondering what right now what people expected as far as what kind of data do you think there is available out there as far as a percentage of a hundred percent uh currently?
Who's participating by phone?
I don't believe she's, I don't believe the person's a commissioner. I believe it's somebody for public comment.
Okay. Uh. Steve, it's an interesting point, and really, there are two different aspects to this, there's a data collection inform uh, uh. Part of it, and then there's where do you house that data, once you have it to make it publicly accessible? Could I suggest, uh, let's take a five to ten minute break, come back if we can come up with some ideas, think about this during the break, and then uh. We have some of our items on the agenda, but we also have a public hearing, and I think folks have been waiting patiently to say their piece as well. Uh, so maybe we might want to think about when we come back, see if we could come to closure on the road inventory option discussion. Maybe um, put off the minimum maintenance and mandatory minimum maintenance questions for another meeting, because those are going to take some time. Go to the public comments so that we do not disappoint folks who have something to say here and have been waiting patiently through this, does that make sense? Okay, so let's take a five, let's say ten minute break, we'll three o'clock, we'll resume. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Jim.
Yes.
We were talking a while ago, um. And you asked me about the county, I just ironically, I'm, I had meetings this morning up in the northern part of the county, so I'm actually doing this zoom from the. Registry of Deeds building in Fort Kent.
Okay.
So I I walked into the uh, the registrar's office to talk to her while we were on break and. Maybe this is what Roberta was hanging up, holding up a while ago, I've never seen this book, but. Are you familiar with this book?
Yes, that's that's the same book I was holding up, each of the county registries has that. And the reason they have it is that I, I, years and years ago, I had asked the D O T if they could give me a printout from their records of just the discontinued roads. And they said, sure, I'll come back in a couple of days and we'll have it for you, and I thought it's going to be this little leaflet or something, and they gave me that book that I held up. And.
Does you, does your book also have this letter filed in it?
Yes, I wrote that.
You wrote this?
Yeah.
If it's. So you know, Aristic, Aristic has it on their, in their files.
Well, any, anyway, the reason they have it is that a number of years later, I was asked to speak to the uh, registers of deeds association. And I brought in that book to show them. And they said, oh, where can we get that? So I went back to the D O T and asked them if if we could have more printouts for the counties, and they said, oh, that computer program. Doesn't exist anymore, we have the information from it, but we no longer have the ability to sort it, to print that out. So I said, well, can I copy the copy that I have? And they said, sure. So uh, the registries of deeds paid for it, and I I I got a copy for each of them. And that's my handwriting on the cover. And that's my my letter in the front explaining how to use it.
I see, so it was. It's according to this, it was compiled in nineteen ninety-nine by the D O T Division of Rights of Way.
Sounds about right.
Okay, all right, but it's only discontinued county roads.
That's correct.
Typically says in your letter, this does not include town discontinued roads.
Closed roads.
Right. And it also doesn't include closed roads, which there are about fifteen of, I think, or fifteen towns that have them. On.
What are closed?
Good question.
Yeah, good question, there, there is no definition of a closed road, but there are some counties that closed roads instead of discontinuing them.
Oh.
Some are close to winter maintenance, but more more just close to public travel and meaning discontinuance, but it's never quite clear.
I'm gonna run this back in there, I I feel like I'm holding a sacred document.
You are.
Close, close to maintenance is another term that you'll hear.
Yep.
Jim, are we going to finalize the inventory discussion here and move on to the next item or what?
Yes, we're gonna do that, and I think the idea being, what what are some of the options that are, you know, something that are reasonable? Excuse me, what are some of the possible uh, options that we might have to throw out?
One question for you, Jim, um, I don't know if it's a potential, I know at the beginning of this discussion, you mentioned. Uh, that you have several several recommendations for pieces of legislation or to go in a piece of legislation for the committee. Um, would it? Make sense to in this? Ta- item, this task item that was given to the commission to say that the commission is still working on it, um, and to to give more time.
We could do that, we were trying to make sure we did our homework. Uh, but of course, they they also didn't give us any pay this time around either, uh. Thinking, you know, just in terms of per DM, like travel expenses, that sort of thing, um. We could say we're still working on it, I I guess the the question is, is if there were some obvious things. Obvious places that we could put this. Um, there used to be a state planning office that would have been a wonderful place for this. But that was taken apart uh, during the Page administration, and uh, we don't have that anymore, there is a new state agency. That has similar situations, uh, similar responsibilities in some ways that's just been formed and maybe it could be given to them. Uh, so there there are some options, and so I thought. Initially, we weren't going to offer legislation, we're just gonna offer options, which is all that they asked for. Uh, if we can't agree on options, we can say. You know, we're we're still thinking about it, but if there are some obvious ones that we wanted to come out with, uh, this would be the time.
Um, if I could throw earlier, earlier Ryan mentioned. Not wanting to slough it off on the university, okay? But I do think there's off, there might be opportunities for partnership with the University of Maine system on some of this, maybe. Just a thought.
Another option that I've thought of is I ask the state if we can get funding to hire a, an intern to to uh, go through all those annual reports at the state library or wherever. Um, if if they could go through one town per day for, you know, for three hundred days, there's three hundred towns taken care of.
If that's the collection part, what do you do with all that information once you have it?
Yeah, then then my next thought was, well, I don't know if the state library would have room for it right now, because. They they have a lot of stuff that's in remote storage, because they're they're limited on space while they're waiting for the renovations to be done. I don't know if the uh, state archives would have any room, I'm not sure where they are right now. Um, but uh, maybe, maybe the university, it also depends on what the volume is going to be, if it could fit in a book like that one I showed you. Then. Space isn't really a problem, but if they're gonna, if each town is going to send in a stack of records this high, then then uh, that's another question.
What would be useful? Imagine that you're a realtor, you're a homeowner, you're a purchaser, uh, you're a road commissioner. You're looking for information about abandoned and discontinued roads, we're gonna look for it.
Well, the first thing I do is I go to that county book and see whether it was ever a county road, or actually, I go to the D O T map viewer first. And see if it it highlights as a county road, and if it does, then I go to that book and look up the record on it. And uh, or I I click on the link on the D O T map viewer that will give you the code numbers. And then I get in touch with the Division of Rights Way and get a copy of the record, if it was not a county road. Then I, if the town doesn't have the record readily available, I go to the state library and I start going through annual reports.
So Jim, I think it'd be appropriate just to to maybe put adverbage there that. Um, you know, the commission spent a lot of time trying to come up with options, but we're not there yet. Um, I think Tom's idea of having a map layer. Layer in there for future. Records that come in of discontinued roads. Sure, I think if I talk to our data people over here. Sure, they'll put in, you know, a new layer that's purple roads, and those would be discontinued and abandoned with maybe. A a data link in there for page volume and whatever number. But trying to go backwards and put in. Files this thick, that's going to revolve people and we just don't have the. We're not going to do that, but moving forward, I think there's some things we could talk about that we could offer. But I don't think we can put anything definitive in this report right now as far as good viable options, and by the way, I talked to nine one one office. They're just not set up to do that sort of thing, they just don't do that, and so I don't think we ought to even put them in there.
So so what would happen, Pete, if I sent you a list of twenty-one public easements in Fayette? Could you put those onto the map viewer?
I'm going to talk to our data office first to see if they'd want to do such a thing. I would think the fact that we've got. Um. Old county layouts in there that you use all the time. That this could be just another layer you turn on. And if it was a reasonable amount that came in, which wasn't going to take some staff persons a lot of time. Yeah, they'd do that.
Okay, so so each week I send you another town that I've gone through.
Roberta, don't tell me you're gonna go to the state library here for the next fifty-two weeks and come up with. Oh, just a little pile every week and we'll just vote them to beat.
There we go.
That's not gonna work.
But I've already got about a dozen towns done.
Are you sure you're using the right projection system? For the uh, for the G I S?
Hey, Rebecca.
I'd like to nominate Roberta to get an honorary law degree to go and make this her capstone project. And to link up with G I S. Under like a Newt Hermanson Memorial Scholarship with.
There you go.
Digital library, to have a G I S layer. And. To to give that project to someone who is definitely passionate, is going to be able to dig down into that.
Our organization would help on that, do we, we have a couple of uh, Esri licenses, so we would share one. For that purpose, no problem.
Sure, okay, I I think I'm hearing.
Hermanson Minter. Layer.
Yes, that's awesome, that would be perfect. There was, there was university resources actually that looked back at the two volume set that I have of. The types of like the construction of roads that was done in the nineteen thirties, that was a university project. And they created two volumes, and I believe the county project was also. And they created two volumes. And I believe the county project was also uh uh in a intern, so I think that might be a path forward a- as well as linking it to the GIS layer.
The commission is continuing to explore options to create an inventory for abandoned and discontinued roads in in the state. We we can, we can recount some of the ideas, maybe, but even that might be too much. Uh, but the idea is there are no options that are going to be mutually agreeable to all those on you on on this call. We don't have authority to to throw the county registries under the bus, as as Ryan pointed out. And and you know, maybe maybe ultimately the registry of deeds is an appropriate place to to put this. Uh, we're not, we're not there yet to make that recommendation. We don't have buy-in. We don't know that that's going to necessarily work. Uh, you know, if you if you have to go search title in Maine, you have to go to sixteen places um. Or you you're you're operating under a different system in each county. And so uh do we want something that's a little more uniform and easy to find on this or or not? And ultimately, it's the legislature's call. So we'll uh we'll hold off on that piece. With that, could I suggest that we uh take that we postpone discussion on items uh eight and nine to our next meeting? And move to a public hearing? I don't know that we have to make a motion to do that. I'm seeing nodding heads, so I I think we s- okay. Let's let's open the public hearing then. And as the first item on that public hearing, I would ask uh Heather to enter into the record the four written comments that we received by email.
I have six.
You have six now, okay.
I have six. I got two more today. Um. So the first one is from Paul Dennis in Bodingham. And he says, thank you all for continued efforts. He said, my wife and I moved into our home on a private road about twelve years ago. Our property has an easement written into it for access to a state road about an eight hundred feet from our home. Years later, through word of mouth, we found out it wasn't a private easement. It was a public easement. When originally originally purchasing our home, the title insurance didn't identify the easement as public, nor was it identified on our title or any readily available town map. The only official reference I found to it from the town was from the town warrant that referred to our road as road noted with property boundary owners and two roads on either side. Considering the nature of the public easement and its effect on property value and burden for both current and future property owners, a public public easement should be easier to identify. Since then, I have catalogued every road that I can find in town that has been up for discontinuance since nineteen sixty five. The intent of this research is to share with the town to allow current and future property owners in the town to make informed decisions when purchasing, selling, or improving property. This research included documenting the location of discontinuance, what was put on the warrant articles, and what was recorded in the town meeting minutes. My next effort is to review select board minutes for abandonment. My understanding is that this inventory doesn't necessarily indicate the legal status of the road, but at least can be used to provide visibility into a road status. The impact that these roads can have on community members is significant, however. Under current law, the location and status of these roads, as well as the information to determine the status, is buried within town documents. If one person in the community has time to pull together an inventory of impacted roads, all that dozens of hours over a few years, it seems to me municipalities throughout the state could do so as well. Understanding that most municipalities are short on staff, there may there many impacted members of these communities, including me, would who would likely serve on volunteer committees, research these roads through town records. I would recommend that all municipalities inventory all roads that are abandoned or discontinued with the date and the recorded article with all applicable amendments based on available documentation. After years of discussion with the town, neighbors, and other stakeholders, the public easement to a section of our property was removed at town meeting. This process took seven years to complete. Since removing the public easement, damage to our property has reduced while maintaining non ATV or motorized vehicle recreational activity. The next one I have is from Priscilla Cargren. And she says, to whom it may concern, we live on a road for which the first half mile is serviced by the town of Carthridge very poorly. There is a mile from there to our property line that contains a year-round resident, four camps, and a maple sugaring shack, and is also used by the public. This part of Smith's Road is discontinued and is not serviced by the town. We have been exclusively maintaining the road in all seasons. We pay significant taxes to the town, yet do not receive any road maintenance. We asked the town about assistance about ten years ago and since, but we were told no. After the first half mile, the road continues as a discontinued road with no signage from there to our property. Because of the no signage, we get public vehicular traffic, cars, trucks, four-wheelers, snow machines, etc. These vehicles often have no respect for the road, and we have to repair the damage in addition to regular maintenance. P S, we have had a hard time getting the town to take care of a town bridge that's not strong enough for a fire truck and the first half mile that they are responsible for. The part the town is responsible for is a disgrace. Our complaints receive constant excuses and delays. The town does not properly maintain what they should, so further help is not expected. The next one I have is from Spetsin, Maine, and it's Thomas Mayer. He says, I have lived on this road for two decades. My town taxes, my town taxes frontage on a dirt road with no service and no maintenance tax for frontage at the same rate as lakefront property. My road has no drainage and runs downhill, causing a huge ice floe several inches thick and hundreds of feet wide that crosses the point road. A blacktop town-maintained road presenting a constant danger to people on that road. I have brought this to the attention of the town with pictures and certified letters. The only response was a little dirt dropped at the bottom of the road and no drainage work done at all. My road started as a through road until enough people moved to the other side to trigger maintenance by the town, at which time the town split the road into two separate roads, denying maintenance to either road with no recorded public notice. There are constant vehicles and trucks cutting through the road, mostly from people that have no abutting property, but like cruising dirt roads, causing further damage and huge ruts in mud season. A few years ago, a tree fell on the power lines, causing a fire in the tree cover. I called the local fire department at that time and heard sirens and trucks, but no response. I drove past the fire to the end of the road and was told by the fire chief that they could not drive up the road. Luckily, the fire burnt out and CMP made repairs. But due to the status of the road, CMP has been unresponsive to many years of warnings about overhanging dead limbs causing more than one outage. My road is a half mile long. In winter, we are allowed one five gallon bucket of dirt for each driveway. The town considers the half mile long road as one driveway. He, maybe I could use a salt shaker to spread the dirt a few grains every yards. I have begged the town to just drive up and dump some gravel in order to let me navigate the deep ruts that cover the entire distance. They refuse. I have asked the town to let me buy a truckload of gravel from their supplier at the town price. Again, they refuse. During the past two decades, my wife and I have raised special needs children with medical needs. I made the town aware of this, and they told me the only thing they could do is if my house was on fire, they would try to find an available plow truck to clear the way for a fire truck. Again, that would not provide any gravel, even to just dump it in a pile so I could spread it. I am now seventy six years old and plowing is getting to be hard. While maintaining a plow-equipped pickup truck is expensive but necessary, I have to pay to have sand spread on a half-mile road several times a year at a hundred and fifty dollars per trip, or the ice would be so bad I would slip off the road even with a four-wheel plow truck. To add insult to injury, the town plow trucks do not leave a gap at the end of the road. They simply plow it in to a depth of several feet and complain if I do not clear it off down to the tar on the maintained road, saying I am creating a hazard. To anyone that thinks the towns will do something at some time to help those on discontinued roads, please travel through Deer Barn Road in the winter. Bring your boots so you can walk out when you get stuck. I haven't, he's included some of the pictures, but due to the lack of depth perception, what appears to be a small dip is several inches deep. The whole road simply becomes a river as it rains or snow melts. One picture shows hundreds of dollars of gravel and one small area that was needed because of a four-wheel truck with chains on all wheels could not pass. The road drops over eighteen inches from one side to the other. Respectfully, this is our reality. This was one of the ones I had sent you with pictures attached.
I I don't know if it's necessary to read all of them, the the ones that you'd sent to each of the board member, commission members. I think we've all read them. And so I think we've just entered them into the record uh as as part of the public.
So the the other ones I have emailed to you guys. So the first two were the ones I just, yep.
Right. Okay, so uh with that, are there members of the public who wish to speak? Please raise your hand and we'll take you one by one.
I have Jennifer Whitmore up first, and she is iPhone number two. This is showing us iPhone number two.
Great, thank you.
Jennifer. Jennifer, did you wanna take yourself off and speak?
Hi, I'm sorry. I had to figure out how to get off mute. Hi, yes, my name is Jennifer and I um met Roberta through the Facebook. Um, super thankful that she has been able to at least point us in some direction. Um, it's really super frustrating for me as a homeowner and my family to live on a road like this when we bought um here, they were, we were told seasonal maintenance. Um, and you know, we really didn't think too much of it until, you know, we started assuming more and more of the burden. Um, you know, they say our road is a public easement road, but there's no absolutely no documentation stating that it's a public easement road. They have a piece of paper at the town written, public easement road. Um, so you know, I think what's really important, and you guys talk about, you know, the town, uh, we pay a lot of money to the town for taxes, and the town should have to supply us with the roads um and what they legally are. And if that means they have to do research because someone else at the town didn't prior do research, then that's what they need to do. Our tax money pays, um, you know, and hearing your letters from those other other persons. You know, we don't get any anything from our town. We can go to the dump. You know, we don't get any road maintenance from them. Um, and it's a big fight to get them to even do anything on the road. We've given the town checks for twenty-five hundred dollars for gravel and and paid the town for gravel and done things. And it just, it it irritates me and makes me ugly because we have neighbors that don't help. Um, we're, we have taken on the responsibility of getting in the road so that we can get get into our home. Um, we just had our in-laws living here, eighty-four and ninety-four. Um, you know, that's a big burden, too. God forbid an ambulance or someone had to get down this road. Um, you know, and then what I have done, um, which has made a lot of the townspeople very angry is I put up cameras all the way up and down our properties. Um, and I have, I know exactly who goes up and down the road. Um, you know, they call me the road warden and they don't like me, uh, but I'm not gonna let them out there and damage it. And it's just really frustrating that there's no help and that and that there's no like, no one can, you know, make them give us the information we need. We get a letter from the town, from that that MMA group, basically, that tells us or that gives us some information, but it's just, it's just wrong. So it's really frustrating and something really needs to be done. I guess that's about all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you for your comments. Your next speaker? Heather, who who is next?
It's Elizabeth. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Flane. I am with Maine Real Estate Co. And I'm actually on here, Roberta asked me to jump on. I have a couple of clients who have some property in Poland right over the Raymond Poland line, and they would like to sell it, but we are in a fight with the neighbors that live at the beginning of the road. They're saying that that where it it's a private drive and after that it turns into what used to be the old Black Cat Road. And they're saying that these folks have no right of way to the property. We've talked to lawyers and going down the route of having, you know, spending lots and lots of money to fight with these neighbors. I mean, I have one gentleman who has fifty-eight acres up there and another woman who has like eight acres who want to sell their property. They've been paying lots of taxes on it. The town has been, neither town has been helpful, Poland or um Raymond. I've got the most information from Roberta. Um, and I'm hopefully gonna be connecting with the Historical Society to try to get some more, but they're open like on Wednesday from like five to eight and the contact number doesn't work or the email. So I don't even know if I'm gonna show up there tomorrow and someone's gonna be there to help me. Um, so it's just frustrating as a real, on the realtor end of this too. And I, like the previous lady, I mean, I feel bad. You know, when you're selling your property, the last thing you wanna do is sell something that has problems like this with it. Um, so, yeah, we're trying, I mean, are the parcels of land I have have been surveyed and everything. Um, and it shows the, you know, old Black Cat Road there. But it's just, we're up against this wall. I have had neighbors come out. One guy came out and told me he was calling the police on me that we were up there just walking these folks land. So it's, it gets a little crazy out there, and it would be nice to have a resource for us to um get some answers. Because the towns are zero help. I like, that's all I have.
Any, any questions?
Jim, Jim, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, is this, is is the issue whether the status is Elizabeth, this is is this issue whether what the status of this road is? Is that it? It was a, it was a town road and now it's unclear what the status is? Or is that, is that the issue?
I think that we had, correct me if I'm wrong, Roberta, I think we had figured out that it was discontinued. We just couldn't find the documentation on all that in where it was. Maybe Roberta could shed a little bit more light on that. Uh, there's a clear road. There's four houses that go in. And then my client's road, I mean, you can still see like an old tote road of where it would still keep going. And it goes over, if anybody's familiar with Poland, Black Cat Mountain, it goes up over Black Cat Mountain and down the other side. Um, and this is, it shows right on the survey. This is where you would go in off Tenny Hill and everything. And there's four houses on this particular road, and they're saying it's a private drive. And they're saying that any of the land in behind there has no right to it.
I I, if I remember correctly on that one, it it looks as if it may have been a rangeway. I, it goes in a dead dead straight line for a long distance. Uh, the problem is I can find a rangeway map for one town, but not for the other town. And I, I'm finding these early maps can be difficult. If I could find a map that showed that it was indeed a rangeway, then technically they should still have at least a private right to it, even if any public rights were given up. Um, but we haven't been able to find the rangeway map. I did find, I believe, a discontinuance for another road that said that it went from Black Cat Road to someplace else, which implies that Black Cat Road was not discontinued at the time this other road was. So I, it may be an abandoned road, which should preserve a public easement, but finding the records for it has been very difficult.
It's very frustrating for, I'm sorry, very frustrating for the folks that own this. I mean, fifty-eight acres in Poland, Maine is is worth quite a bit of money, and it's absolutely beautiful. I've walked this property with the gentleman a couple of times. Um, and this other woman who recently, her father passed away and she inherited this other piece of property. She reached out to me and she was like, well, I wanna sell my property. I'm like, well, you're in the same boat as my poor friend over here who has fifty-eight acres. Because her deed does not clearly state anything either.
So I'm just trying to get to the, the issue, is it, is it that the town, if you're asking the town, you've asked the town what the status of this road is and they don't know?
They don't know.
And they, they, it apparently was a town road, but they don't know if it is or what happened to it or anything like that. Is that it? Is that the, is that what you're finding?
Yeah. And I'm sure back in the olden days, it was probably something the horse and buggy went over and, you know, and that's the way it was. I mean, you can see I have walked what they're calling the road. I have walked it. I mean, it's it's a tote road. Um, but that would be the clear spot that you would put a road.
Yeah. Excuse me. So it sounds like there's a road with four houses on it. Uh, and then it kinda the eh, the road uh suddenly gets much smaller and continues to where a building is up there somewhere. Okay.
Well, there's no building. It's just raw land.
Okay. There's a lot of that in northern Maine. There's a lot of roads on properties that don't necessarily, they were probably used for initially for logging.
Right, but on the survey, on the survey, it says um, Black Cat Mountain Road, right along the whole entire length of that whole property.
Okay.
Both of my clients' property.
And another complication that enters into it on this one is that there was a lawsuit in the other town, not the town that this property is located in, but uh the the part of the road that you'd have to travel through in the other town to get there. And I haven't been able to find how the lawsuit was settled because apparently it never actually went to court. It must have been settled out of court. But apparently said that it's private. So I don't know quite how they did that.
Well. I, I don't, are there any other questions on this matter?
Well, I just wanna say that's where the frustration lies for these, these people trying to sell their property. A, they're paying a lot in taxes on a sixty, I mean, a fifty acre parcel of land. They're paying just as much as anybody else that would have it on Route twenty-six, which I find very unfair if they can't even get to their property. And then this other woman who had And then this other woman who has this other eight acre parcel. And then the towns are not, they're no help at all. And, um. You know, and now they're in a hostile environment. These guys can't even go to their property because the neighbors come out with pretty much almost guns and are like, get out of here. So I mean, something definitely needs to happen. What it is, I don't know. Um, or you know, I'd love to be part of maybe trying to figure out a way to do this, but it's definitely. It happens quite a bit and, um. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the next steps are, but.
Well, it's certainly something the commission will be thinking about as it proceeds forward. We, we've been talking about the reasons for having a road inventory and how to do it. And this is certainly a good. So thank you for your, for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work you guys are doing.
Thank you. Heather, our next speaker.
Uh, Gretchen, if she would like to speak, Gretchen.
If you could unmute.
You gotta unmute.
There we go. I just want to give a special shout out to Roberta. She's been amazing through everything and. I just don't know what I would have done without her. But anyway, um, so mine's a little interesting. I live on a road. Um, that's town maintained, but the extension. That I am on is not. Um, so when we first moved out here twenty-five years ago, we were sold the property as being on a discontinued. Uh, right away. So we purchased the property. What the town told us at the time when we pulled the building permit, they were not going to maintain it down here and that we had to build the road up to town specs to get to our house. You know, for emergency vehicles, things like that. We didn't have a problem with that. Um, we went back and forth with the town. They would put out a private. Road sign. Um, at the end of our driveway, because the old right of way, the cars were dumping trash and things like that coming in here. Um, then a new batch of selectmen would come to our small town and they wouldn't like the sign being there, so they'd pull it out. So we went back and forth like for, for years with us. So one day I went to the town hall and I walked in, it was twenty-twenty-two. And they said, your ears must have been ringing. We were just talking about you. We should be plowing that road that you live on. So I'm like, really? Oh, wow. I came here for a private sign, but it, that would be great. We were told when we first moved out here by the, the plow, the towns. Plow contractors, employees that they should be plowing you guys. There's no reason this is a town road. And we're like, yeah, yeah, whatever. So the town. Selectmen all agreed that our extension should be plowed. Everybody signed the agreement that we would be plowed for twenty-twenty-two while they determine what type of road we were on. Everybody signed it except for our road commissioner. And coincidentally, in my small town, the road commissioner also. Picks his own personal company to be awarded the contract for this town winter snow removal every year. Like if other competing contractors come in. Because he's road commissioner, he's able to pick his own private company to be the bid winner. But anyway, and that that's been the same way for twenty-five years. So what happened is. We, he refused to sign the selectman letter, but all the selectmen signed it and said, don't worry, you're going to be plowed this year. And we heard one of the selectmen said, yeah, he said, you guys are just going to complain about how he plows it. And I'm like, we've never, I've never even met him. I don't even know who he is. I mean, you know, keep in mind, guys, we've lived here twenty-two years. Um. So. Come the next, at the end of twenty-twenty-two, I think it was the day before Christmas, we had a snowstorm predicted and I had a knock on the door from a selectman with a letter saying that they've determined our. Road to be a private driveway. And they were no gonna, no longer gonna plow anymore. And of course, the weather forecast had a big snowstorm. The first snowstorm of twenty-twenty-three was coming. So I'm like, oh, this is great. Whatever. I mean, you know, here's our letter. It's a private driveway. We don't need to worry about anything. And that was part of the determination. I'm like, is this a right of way? Is it a driveway? I mean, if you're telling us everybody can cross here, why should we have to maintain it ourselves? And that's why they decided to plow while they figured it out. They called it a private driveway until. The person that wanted to walk through there got mad about something. Called the town hall and complained about a tree being down way, way further past our house than she couldn't walk her dog. Conveniently, as conveniently. So I called the town. The town says, oh yeah, well, I worded that letter wrong. Yeah, everybody can walk through there all they want. So come to find another thing I ended up hearing through the neighborhood. Was the road commissioner at the end of twenty-twenty-two told the town, I will absolutely not do the, the plow bid for you guys this winter. If I have to plow their driveway. So the town selectman said, oh, okay, you don't have to. So I've got a little more going on here than just the status of the road. I've got. What feels like, it feels like a kind of a bully situation where we've got a road commissioner. Who just doesn't want to do this. And I've, and I've heard through the grapevine that the, the family was upset when we bought the property because their family had wanted it. That is my road commissioner. So I don't know if that's true or not, but at any rate, so we're out here. You know, we've got this person that's walking their dog through the right of way, literally lives a mile away. She has to go out of her way to come here. My husband had just been home for four days after a quadruple bypass surgery and she was on my front lawn cutting down trees in the right of way. My trees, cutting down my trees on my front lawn because she said they were in the right of way. So we've got all kinds of like stuff going on here. And it's frustrating and I have no idea who to talk to and I'm not rich to go hire an attorney to get this town. Backwoods town politics stuff sorted out. That's what I feel like I'm a vic, we're victimed of. I don't feel like it's. The discontinued stuff necessarily that's so pressing. I don't care if people walk through here as long as they're not. Taking a chainsaw and the trees in my yard. I don't care as long as they don't damage things and, and most are very courteous. But I just feel like. Um, the town. We're get, we're actually coincidentally, the road I live on, we're the highest tax paying. Resident on this whole street and there's about twenty-five houses. We get no break in taxes either. Um, but yeah, that's pretty much what I'm going through and I've, Roberta knows a lot about it because I've been complaining to her a lot, but it's just really. Throws me off when I walk into the town hall and the selectmen literally look at you and say, we should have been plowing you all along. We're going to plow you. And they, the town owns the land across from us. So they're like. They own all the land on the right of way. They acquired it while we were living out here from back taxes. Someone didn't pay their taxes, I guess, over there. And coincidentally, the year they chose to plow us, they also cleared their woodlot over there. So I don't know if the plot, I don't know if that was part of them getting in there for the woodlot and just playing me along for. I don't know. I don't know what happened, but anyway, it's just very frustrating. I don't know where to turn because I'm not rich and. Don't want to be hiring a lawyer. So, but thank you for letting me talk. I appreciate it.
You're muted, Jim. You're muted.
Yeah, I, there we go. Okay. Thank you for your comments. Are there any questions for Gretchen?
What, what town Gretchen is this? Or maybe you don't want to say, I don't know.
I know, I'm afraid because of.
Then don't.
It's. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Gretchen. Our next speaker. Heather.
Uh, Jonathan wasn't sure if he wanted to speak or not. Jonathan, did you want to add any comments at this time?
Hello?
No, okay. I believe that's it. I don't believe I see anyone else unless I'm mistaking.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes. Did you want to, did you want to speak, Jonathan?
Yeah, I'm, I guess I would speak just for a minute. I'm not sure how much this will help. Um. I just became aware. Can you hear me okay or?
If you could move a little closer to the, um, microphone or just up the bunch a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm not sure how much I really have to add to this. I don't know a lot about, um, this committee, just a little bit. And I did speak with Roberta via email recently. Um. I. My issue is with peace property that I'm on a contract and I am purchasing regardless of what happens. Um, it was peace property that was. On the market for quite a while. And I, I, my understanding is a lot of people went and looked at this property and wanted it, but were. Basically run off by the neighbors, um, saying you don't have land access. You have no way to get in here. Um. The situation here, and I guess hopefully this might help you guys. You know, going forward is this situation was created. In nineteen seventy-eight when a town decided. To, um. Discontinue a section of a road. And this is a road that has been in existence for probably two hundred years. Um, the road was used for quite a long time, probably. Right up through the eighties or the nineties, but with the replacement of. A state road coming through. In the twenties. People had other ways to get around town. Um, but the road was still used and the town actually owned property on this road. In the very beginning and what happened is. Around seventy-eight, from what I'm finding through my research is the town sold the lot. And when the town sold the lot, this was a road that came. It, it was quite steep to get up and you know. Had stone walls on both sides of it. It was. Over the years, it was, it was trench down so far below the, the grade of the, that the land had been before, you know, which. Probably trying to make it easier to, you know, drive up. Back in the day. Um. And then somebody also had put in a, a road, a little bit up the road that came in that was shorter and it was much easier to use. And I know. You know, coming from where I came from, where it was ninety percent dirt roads and ten percent tarred roads, I know exactly what was going on here. You know, twenty, thirty years ago, people were using this for a shortcut to get one, to one side of town. Well, anyways, what happened is the town, you know, did their due process in nineteen seventy-eight and they discontinued the road. Um, they had sold off the property. The town owned a lot there. They didn't really. Need it anymore. But by doing that, they, they just. Shut off a small section of road. The next section of road. Saw less use and in that day and time, which I think it's seventy-six was the year that they took out of the wording. Where you could put up a gate or a sawhorse or whatnot, which I'm guessing that was all happening back then. You know, so the use became less and less and as generations go on and children don't realize, hey, this back road here is accessible, even though my dad used to use it. This road sort of. You know. Stopped being used a lot. So. This next section of road goes through one person, basically a butt state land on one side and another person's land on the other side. And that person. Had, it's under the assumption that the road is abandoned. Um, the problem is the next lot up is the land that I'm buying. And. Dating through my deed research, um, through the course of eight deeds back to nineteen oh six. That, that property description is a piece of property bound by forty rods, by forty rods, by forty rods, by forty rods. And is using the road as one of the lines. And across the street is the state owned land. The, the real only access for this property is. This four tenths of a mile up through the discontinued land and then the assumed abandoned land. Um, you could continue further and it does continue up another one point one miles and lands on another road, but that's going through state property, which. Is accessible in the wintertime by foot or snowmobile, I'm guessing, but you can't drive it in the summertime because you're, then you're going through state land and that's another whole can of worms. Um, so my situation that, you know, I've, I basically have, you know, approached both of the landowners trying to. You know, say hi, I'm the new neighbor and keep it nice and. You know, obviously with nobody. You know, being on that piece of property for years, you know, there's some apprehension in the beginning and after some conversations for. An hour or so, you know, the moods were lightened and one person actually said, hey, you can use my snowmobile right there to get up there. You know, they were really nice people. Um. But, you know, the other property owner is still saying, well, we don't want vehicles going up this road. And you know, you could walk it, but, and I'm not looking to bring utilities in this road. I'm looking just property as for an off. Great cabin. Um, so I'm not really interested in that and I don't mind. Snowmobiling in, but in the summertime I will need access with a vehicle to at least get. Some, you know, supplies and equipment in there. Um, there's quite a bit of pine in there. I'll probably cut down. To build the cabin and I'll need to bring a mill up to do it. Um, but I would say in the future, if you guys are trying to help people or these towns so that these issues don't arise, the. The big thing I see here is that the road was discontinued by the town, just the first section, which leads to other issues and. They knew that this property was out back and, and one of, you know, one of my big issues. Let me just look at my notes. Is that the town. Actually taxes. The, the property is taxed and on the tax card it actually says. The number, which is fifty and it says the name of the road. So, and they're calling it a road that is really non-existent because if you Google this road or. Look up any roads in Maine or go to the town and try to find this road, there is no road with this name. Um, that was a, a person that was, that lived on the road back in the early nineteen hundreds. Um, that was a prominent figure in Massachusetts that built a summer residence up there and. No longer, the house is no longer there. It's gone and it's actually a historic site. But. You know. Biggest issue is that beginning section. You know, and, and they, when they did record it, they did record it, it has a, a public easement there. But the next section of road is the road. That I'm going to have a problem with and it looks like. You know. There's a good possibility for me, I'm going to have to petition the court. For the easement, uh, by necessity, which is going to cost me money. Um, and it really shouldn't. Um. And I'm hoping that I could still work this out with the landowners. I'm going to spend some more time. I don't really need access until summer anyways. It's a snow on the ground. I'm closing. In a couple of weeks. You know, so I hope to work this out, you know, just between us, but it still leads me to the issue down the road. Let's pretend we work it out. What happens? Down the road, when I die and my children inherit this and then same family maybe inherits the land. Is this going to become an issue down the road? Which leads me to the way, but I still need to go to the court unless they want to give me something in writing. But. That's my situation. Hopefully that helps.
Thank you for your comments, Jonathan. We appreciate that. Any questions?
Thank you for hearing me.
Okay. Roberta.
Yeah, um, I'd like to put in some testimony as I, as myself rather than as a commission member, if it's okay to do that. Um, and also my, my husband might want to put in a word or two. Um. Let's see, I actually have some testimony written up here. I, and this is, this is somewhat changing the, the, uh, the subject here a little bit, but it's something that we keep coming back to. In most every issue, in every court case, there is a winner and a loser. There are cases where one party wins one issue and the other party wins another issue, but in each issue, there is a winner and loser. I've been told repeatedly that Jordan versus Canton can't be applied to public easements because the limited user highway law was repealed. But in that case, the town lost its limited user highway. Uh, because, not because the law had been repealed, because it hadn't yet. But because the court said a public easement of travel with no public maintenance would inevitably be destroyed. That destruction did not take place at the time the road was declared to be a limited user highway. The court said the access to abutting properties would inevitably be destroyed, future tense. And that loss of access required just compensation, which the law did not provide. Kenneth Jordan won that issue. The court determined that what mattered was not the legal status of the highway, but the actual and practical consequences, future tense. Of governmental action, whatever that action might be. They compared it to where a limited access highway, i.e. like Route ninety-five. Cuts off access to a side road, causing a property, property access to be lost. So obviously they were talking about the principle of destruction of access by any means, not specifically by being declared of limited use and value to the travel. Traveling public and therefore a limited user highway. We who live on these roads suffer the consequences of the governmental action that made our access into public roads with no public maintenance. The very thing that the court in Jordan said would inevitably destroy the road. See footnote one of Town of Fayette versus Mander, where the court said that the public has an unfettered right of access over a public easement, but the town has no responsibility for maintenance. We had asked the court to consider whether twenty three MRS section thirty twenty eight was constitutional. And the court's answer was that since they were not facing their decision on abandonment, quote, "Our analysis of the legal issues posed by this case makes it unnecessary to discuss or decide the merits of the Mander statutory or constitutional arguments." So that issue remains unexamined by the court. I've been told that Lamb versus New Sharon declared abandonment to be constitutional. Show me where that decision says that an abandoned road remains a public easement of travel. It doesn't. It says that it is well established that public rights may be lost through neglect. Show me where Lamb says that a public easement of travel with no public maintenance is constitutional. It doesn't. It merely says that the public had lost its right to demand the road be maintained. And it said that there was no taking requiring just compensation because the public rights had been lost through long neglect. But nowhere did it say, this road shall now be open to public use without any public maintenance, and that is constitutional. It just didn't say that. Wacholowski versus Brown said that the taking of land for a private way, now known as a public easement, was constitutional. But a few years later, Brown versus Wacholowski said that the taking of a private way without a showing of public exigency was unconstitutional. That issue was not addressed in the earlier case. Abandonment under section thirty twenty eight basically requires a showing that the public has not needed the road for thirty years and then declares it to be a public easement. Where's the public exigency? That issue was not addressed in Lamb versus New Sharon. We tried to bring up that issue in Fayette versus Mander, but the court found an alternative method of declaring young road to be a public easement so they could avoid addressing the constitutionality of abandonment. In my opinion, it's time this commission stopped saying that public easements on abandoned and discontinued roads are constitutional. And instead admitted the truth, a public easement or travel with no public maintenance will inevitably be destroyed. That destroys property access repeatedly and indefinitely. There is no practical way to make compensation for that. The truth is that the reason no one wants to address that core issue is that no one has yet figured out a way to resolve the issue without opening a huge can of worms. So let's be honest and say that that is a real problem and stop pretending that public roads without public maintenance are constitutional. So that's what I have to say on it. Um, I, I know I keep, I keep coming back to the same issue, but it doesn't go away. And you've heard from these people that have testified. But, uh, these, these roads, when they get used by the public and don't get maintained by the public, they end up being real problems. And it's not right for the landowners to be forced to maintain these roads without any compensation. And, you know, they, they don't necessarily want to maintain them. It's not like this is something that, uh, they're voluntary, voluntarily doing. They're being forced to maintain it because if they don't, nobody else is going to either. And pretty soon they won't have access.
Thank you, Roberta. Any questions?
Did you want to add anything?
Well, yeah, I think you got a couple of points off on it.
You wanted to say anything more?
Really quickly, uh, because I bought my property in nineteen seventy one, prior to the nineteen seventy six act of the, the state of making all private ways into public easements. I can debate the issue of my road being a private way, but even at that, that's ex post facto. Nobody gave me any notice. I didn't go to the legislature, didn't know about it. So that makes it unconstitutional right there. You cannot have a public easement on this road because no notice, no compensation, nothing. And a public easement, as it's now understood, is a road that comes into effect because it was abandoned and wasn't maintained for thirty years. My road hadn't not been maintained for thirty years because of that. But in the U.S. Constitution, in Article One, Section One, it says there'll be one lawmaking agency in the country, and that's in the federal level. But it also says in Article Six, and I'm going to paraphrase this, that the constitution laws pursuant to it are the law of the land, semi-colon. And the judges of every state shall be bound thereby. And anything in there, the state's constitutions or laws, to the contrary, I, uh, notwithstanding or have no standing. That means the courts are supposed to do their work in accordance with the law, not by their own opinion. And unfortunately, much of this problem exists because like in our case, the town went to the county asking for a discontinuance. The county gave them a closing. That's not what the town asked for. Then they said it was a private way. Private ways were specifically known what they were by statute. They weren't laid out over public roads. They were to a property that no, did not yet have access. Now, if we want to keep playing games of lying to one another, covering our tracks, you know what? That means that you're forcing me to take care of a road against my will for the public's benefit in violation of the thirteenth amendment of the United States Constitution. And even though the state only made its decision in Canton on its own constitution, it was directly in compliance with the U.S. Constitution about not taking private property for public purposes. Good luck when this lawsuit comes up. You've got to let the legislature know that what they have done by calling a public even, even of travel, as the state Supreme Court said in seven, nineteen seventy, all of a sudden now becomes a specific type of road. But a public easement of travel is meaningless unless there's public maintenance. That's your problem. They've got to understand that. Then maybe we can do something and primarily into the future. Because anything you do to the past is ex post facto and therefore unconstitutional. So you can't make a law that becomes unconstitutional on its face. I'm sorry, but I'm sick and tired of hearing this garbage going on. Thank you, Rebecca. And you're the people who wrote up that rule because it's in the legislative record saying that they went to the main municipal to have that law written.
Thank you, David. With that, we still have a fair amount of work on our plate to, to, uh, have accomplished. We'll need to have a vote in January to adopt the report. So I will be working, uh, with the committee on the, uh, putting together the road inventory, uh, option discussion that there won't actually be options, but we'll talk about what we've done. I'll, I'll work with regard to the, the idea of the changing private, uh, private way to public easement and what might be done on that, see if we can come up with something acceptable. So I think we're talking about a, a meeting mid-January so that there'll be enough time to, uh, to wrap up that report and have it submitted to the legislature. So I'll ask Heather to, uh, put together a doodle poll so that we can find a, a meeting date in mid-January that with any luck, there won't be snow, ice, or unfortunate weather circumstances or whatever, uh, that we can all, that we can all meet at, uh, virtually or in person to try to get this report finalized. Any other questions, comments, thoughts from commission members before we wrap this up? Thank you all for your patience, for your participation today. Uh, thank you to the public for participating as well. We appreciate your comments. And, uh, thank you and wishing all a very happy holiday season as we move forward. See you next year. Thanks.
And may everyone who is on one of these roads and ends up trying to plow budge in the next few days, good luck with it.